Brito, can you guide us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and do roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes, yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
Here.
Trustee Johannes?
Trustee Gonzalez, you on?
I'm right here.
Trustee Napoli Bellaries?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, Brito?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Here.
You have form.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to 3.4, affirmation of the statement of cooperation. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. Full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda, but in summary, we have committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Moving right along, 3.5, report of action taken in closed session. VP Quinlan, do we have anything to read up? Madam Clerk, can you confirm?
No, no report out.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to 3.6, approval of the agenda. Thank you, trustee Withrow.
Second.
Second, trustee Reese?
Student trustee Hogan?
Oh, hold on just a minute, just a second.
So I wanted to pull consent item 7.1.
Pull for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, great. So noted. Any other items, colleagues? Okay, minus 7.1, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion again? Trustee Withrow? Okay, thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you on?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dolphin Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. 7.3 approval of the minutes. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Second.
Second.
Thank you, VP Quinlan. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you on?
Upstate.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Dolphin Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Moving on to 3.8 associated student government reports. We want to start with College of Alameda.
Sorry, I'm the VP of Operations for College of Alameda. As for Ask Cola News, recently we've just been more held up with helping for graduations, both with the RVSP, but also as for the conference that happened in Long Beach, we had a lot to report. We're helping with the newsletter about it to help more of the centers that couldn't join us find out about what we learned. And one that we liked was the one on our mean delegates, but I'll talk about that more later because we had some news to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Berkeley City College?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Cool. So about a month ago, I attended the A to M Conference in Los Angeles with Professor Jimmy and a handful of other students, as well as BCC VP Sean Brooke. It was a very empowering and inspiring conference. It's a lot of great discussions, speeches, and workshops. I really hope that BCC continues to send students to the A to M Conference annually. About two weekends ago, myself, John, and three senators, Lee, Krishan, and Pierce from the AFCC, attended the Student Senate of California Community Colleges General Assembly down in Long Beach with about 600 other California community college students. As a delegate of BCC, as a delegate of PBC, I was able to vote on resolutions and elect students for the next upcoming SSCCC Executive Board. It was a great experience. I was able to bond with my fellow AFCC members. I was able to learn a lot from the workshops and hopefully plan to implement them as my role, or to my role as president. I was also able to network and socialize with other students. I really enjoyed the conference as well as other students who went down with me. The SSCCC Region Three elections took place during the General Assembly in Long Beach for the upcoming year. And then last week, I attended Chancellor's, Chancellor Jackson's workshop as a student representative. On Sunday, I attended the SSCCC Region Three Delegate Assembly. This month is advocacy in April. This upcoming Wednesday, on the 12th, there will be a legislative visit to the Capitol, where there will be discussions with the Speaker of the House, Kevin McCarthy, as well as the California Community College Chancellor, Dr. Daisy Gonzalez. On campus, on Monday, we had, the Muslim Student Association hosted Ramadan iftar event on campus where there was Muslim students as well as allies were able to break their fasts with foods and drinks. Today, and I believe tomorrow, the AFCC elections are now taking place. Students can vote online, also on campus with the laptops provided for students. This upcoming Thursday, the undocumented Community Resource Center will be presenting Give a Dream, Make it Reality with President Dr. Garcia and a special guest Sahari. They will be discussing the mission, vision, and values at BCC's URC when there will be food, drinks, and live entertainment. Our food pantry will be, our food pantry is every Thursdays from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM with fresh groceries and pantry items. Also on Tuesdays from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM, we provide free lunch for students on campus. And then our AFCC meetings take place on campus 12:20 PM to 1:20 PM in room 57. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Merritt College student trustee Hogan, do you have anything to report?
Yes. Hi, everyone. I would like to report that the ASMC was able to also attend the Student Senate California, for California Community College General Assembly, and we were able to write a resolution that was adopted. It was written by our Vice President, Zuni Moon. It was a great experience to be able to network with all of the leaders of the community college network and to be accompanied by our Activities Director, Doris Hankins. On campus, we also hosted, our Puente Club hosted an annual Caesar Chavez Celebration on April 5th. It was in the R10 Building. There was also, there's also Welcome Wednesdays on campus. Every Wednesday from 12:00 to 2:00, there is free lunch. All you need is your student ID or your ID number, and you check in at the Merritt College Cafeteria for a free lunch every Wednesday. This is presented by the Student Activities. Also, today we held a Merritt College One Folk, One Merritt Focus Group. This was held by the Peralta Association of African American Affairs. It was from 12:00 noon to 1:30. This group was focusing on the perspectives and concern of African Americans on the campus. Tomorrow, excuse me, next week, April 18th, there's also another focus group that's online, and it's from 12:30 to 1:30. There's a link on our student website if you would like to attend. Also, tomorrow, Wednesday, April 12th, we have a LGBTQIA+ workshop series that's happening in our R10 Building. That's from 12:00 to 1:30. This is a 90-minute workshop for an overview of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression awareness. Also, on Thursday, April 13th, there's another workshop for inclusion in campus committees for our LGBTQIA+ communities, and that's also in our Huey P. Newton Student Lounge, Room 110. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, student trustee Hogan. Then last but certainly not least, Laney College.
Thank you, Sasha. Good evening, Peralta District. I'm Omolala Atalagbe, representing Laney Student Body. The Student Senate for California Community Colleges, SSCCC, held its 27th Annual General Assembly at the Western Long Beach with an attendance of over 600 students and advisors. So over 25 resolutions were passed relating to issues of accessibility, student resources, basic needs, diversity, inclusion, and much more. So we add five students representing ASOC at this General Assembly. And Cheryl Zhang, who is the student advocate, actually voted on some of the past resolutions. Then ASOC has purchased a six-piece post that would like to install around the tree at the turnabout in front of Laney College. The six poles have this inscription, "May Peace Prevail on Earth." We have it translated into 18 languages from the six continents, and we will commission the post on May 2nd of this year. ASOC will also share promotional items on graduation day, it has May 26th, 2023, and the graduation will be held at the Field House. Latinx and BSU, we have end of the school, end of the semester celebration in May. Further details of the event to be announced at later dates. The Evolved Minds Club will have our session, and that's going to be tomorrow at 2:00 PM, and the location is A201 at Laney College. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we will move to 3.9 Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Madam President, I was informed by Mr. Gonzalez that there is no report out for tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. 3.10 District Academic Senate Report. Dr. Moore?
I don't see Dr. Moore on.
He's here in the boardroom.
Oh, thank you.
Now, there it is. Okay, good evening. President Polk, and members of the Board of Trustees, the Chancellor, the presidents, and members of of this Board of Trustees meeting. We're back after having the spring break, and everybody's busy going to the last few, what is it, a month and a half now till we have our finals. And as we go into the end of the spring, the Senate, like what I was hearing from the student government officials, the Academic Senate in California is having their plenary the 19th, the 19th through the 21st of April down in Anaheim this year, which is a real interesting one because normally we're not anywhere near Anaheim, but in there, one of the main issues that I think everybody's working on, and certainly in our Senate, as well as the colleges are working on OER. There needs to probably be a presentation here. All of the colleges are very much aware, and the faculty are very much aware of the fact of the cost of buying books and equipment for students. And one of the efforts that everybody has been making certainly has been zero costs, which I certainly use and other faculty use, but overall, we have been really trying to aggressively move towards faculty utilizing low cost, if anything. And one of the things that we will be advancing later on has been work that's being done on trying to get an icon put on the on the schedule, on the digital schedule, that shows low cost. And right now, we're determining that that low cost is going to be $50. At other campuses, it varies down to 35 to more than 50. And part of it is recognizing that what do you, how do you define low cost? And so that's one of the things we're, we're working on currently. Another one has been about class, looking at looking at class modality. And we're advancing a, a resolution to that effect that the board and the chancellor will be seeing. We are concerned that modality is a faculty area because when you do your curriculum and you do your courses, one of the things that you have an option to do for particular classes is to decide whether or not you want to teach that class online. And that is certainly something that we do within curriculum. And so there's been instances at this district where deans have wanted to insist to faculty which, which type of class to teach, whether to teach face-to-face or to teach online. And in the curriculums, we can certainly go into each of the, each of the courses and make the changes as we see fit. And so we see this as a purview of the Academic Senate, and we will be moving that forward. Part of the concern and the discussions around that have been, of course, we don't want to have anybody abusing this. We want to ensure that the deans have the right of assignment. We feel that that is totally appropriate and, and what the deans need to do. We recognize that the deans work with the faculty chairs, and the chairs are basically representing other faculties. And part of it is that each of the departments feels strongly, they know what their students want and what kind of courses to offer, and that that is something that is central to what we do as faculty in terms of our mission. So that is something that we will be looking forward to. The issue that is going to be coming up in the next few years is this common call numbering that is happening, that we all don't need to be concerned about it or it as an issue probably for another few years because how do you get all of these districts and colleges to have the same call number? It's going to be one of the most interesting processes that we are legally now bound to do. We're going to need a lot more time for something like that to happen. Fortunately, when we did the survey back to the RP group, we all recognized here at Peralta, we made the wise decision back when to basically have common numbers throughout the four colleges. And so as we move towards that in the future, that is going to be a area that is going to be really interesting as it moves along. The Academic Senate is looking to see how the budget development process goes for the next year. This is the spring that we're doing it, and this is the first time that the colleges are basically going to be taking on more responsibilities in our, in our RAM. And given those circumstances, and it will be interesting to see how our budget is and the requirement from the, the state in terms of how much reserves that we need to have. It used to be where it was only 5% and we did 10%, and now the state is looking at a different number right now. So we're all going to be looking forward to the Finance Department in terms of what they show as the budget. I keep on hearing rumors to the effect that there's deficits, and so I'm going to look for both the Board of Trustees, as well as the Chancellor and everybody else to show us how, how we're going to address those potential deficits. And so as we move forward, I hope that we get some broad discussions going on how we're going to address this. And I hope that the Board of Trustees gets their Subcommittee on Finance going because I think that they will be interested in looking at what, what interested in looking at what, what are the issues? So the one that I continue to raise up at our Budget Committee at the district and at PGC or anywhere else is that we have taken on such a large student debt. And I know that Bueller Reese and other folks have heard me say this time and time again, that you can't sustain thirty million dollars worth of student debt. And that even though you try to get the money and we use third parties to try to get the money, if they could get a quarter off the dollar, that would be amazing. So when you start thinking of thirty million dollars, that's big. And so this year alone, we committed over four million dollars of our of our Fund One to, to wipe away some of that. And as you go along, and I'm sure that Bill Withrow understands that in these times where our numbers are going down, these are the kinds of things that will, we can't sustain. And no matter what, the, the Finance Department and everybody else understands that it was the board, board action from about five years ago that basically said that they wanted to allow students to basically be able to to not pay for, for their registration and, and that they could pay it later. And that now has come to be a large, large burden on this district. You can't say anymore that, no, we're getting all of this money from students, so it's okay. And that the state gives us this money and now we, you know, we'll get the money from the students later because now we're thirty million dollars in the hole. And I know that Bill Withrow and Nikki have seen this amounts in the three million dollars or in the ten million dollars. But I'm sure you've never seen it in the thirty million dollars. And that's after we used the Fed money last year to pay seven million of it down. And so the only place where any action could come to stop that is at the, is at the trustees, because we will continue to do that until the trustees take action. So the point I'm making is, is get your Subcommittee on Finance looking at what are these different expenses and how can we address them and whether or not board needs to take certain actions to really, really stop this? Because we're just continuing to pay for things out of our Fund One that I am assuming you don't recognize or don't know that's coming out of Fund One. So I'll leave it at that and look forward to hearing from the board and from the Chancellor about how do we extricate ourselves from this deficit that we seem to be in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Moore. Now we will move to three point eleven Public Communications on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you have comments that are not agendized tonight, please bring your speaker card forward.
First, we have Sydney Winham. And you will have three minutes.
Good evening, good evening to everyone. My name is Sydney Winham. I'm an instructor at Laney College Cosmetology. And I'm here this evening to express my concerns about the facilities at Laney College and the lack of the maintenance of the facilities at Laney College. So I may, I was initially trained in cosmetology in the eighties. And the facility looks the same. We're now in what, twenty twenty three, the facility looks the same. It is so rundown and so overused. It's not fair for the students that we have at this point. So again, my job as instructor is to train students to go out into the industry. And currently, we have no warm water. We have no hot water. I cannot allow the students to work on clients. That is part of their training. So in May, I'm going to be graduating students that have no experience with touching humans, because we have had no water, warm water for two semesters. So that is, that is my concern, my huge concern. Right? So I'm not really doing what I should be doing, getting the students ready for the workforce, which is one of the goals of the college, right? I'm supposed to graduate students and get them working. So when students go to the salons, they have to do a practical. No one's going to hire a student that doesn't have any skills. And they're not going to have skills because they haven't had a chance to work on the clients because there's no warm water, no hot water. Also, the facility again is rundown. I think that people don't realize that cosmetology students are in the building from eight in the morning until ten at night all year round. We don't have a break. So can you imagine? You can't keep the facility clean. It needs to remodel. I sweep and mop every single day. I can't clean it. It's uncleanable. So I'm asking you all to give us some consideration. Come visit us, come pay attention to what's really going on at Laney. I'm not the only department that has concerns about facilities. So that's my talk. Thank you.
Next, we have Tansy Moon.
Hello, everyone. I hate to piggyback off Ms. Winham, but she's my instructor. So I didn't get to communicate to her about the talking points. So unfortunately, they are a bit doubled, but like I said, my name is Tansy Moon. Thank you. I am a student representing the Laney Cosmetology class. And right here, I have a list of concerns we wanted to bring to the board. Number one, of course, as she said, hot water. Two, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. We have none of those. The bathroom is a safety issue because of how often it breaks. Availability of drinking water. We have no drinking water at our facility. The Peralta parking lot is not secure because the security is not always posted. And there are many instances of students having their cars broken into. Proper P P E, which is personal protective equipment, is very important because in our field, we work with a lot of chemicals and we are not provided with that. And like she said, condition of facility. So what's interesting about this list is that it was actually composed by cosmetology students in twenty sixteen. These are the same problems we have today. For over six years, the complaints with students and staff have been ignored. These are not small issues. This is trade. Students come to the department to get their license and get a job. And we have improper facilities and lack of funding. Students are unable to learn and unable to become employed when they graduate. Lack of proper ventilation and protective equipment means that we are unable to practice using the professional products used in our industry. And the rare times we do use chemicals such as hair relaxers, we are not provided with any protection other than open window. It's important to mention that this violates cautious laws regarding using formaldehyde and products which is often used in hair relaxers. The lack of hot water means, as she said, we are unable to perform services on clients, which is a fundamental part of learning this trade. Lack of funding means we have no supplies to work with, which is ridiculous because our entire field is based on hands-on work with materials. Not only is this hazardous for students to graduate without proper training, but it prevents us from finding employers, employment, sorry. Salons and other prospective employers expect cosmetology schools to train us, but students aren't able the teachers are unable to do so without funding and resources from the administration. The severe lack of funding has led our department to go from four teachers at the beginning of the twenty twenty two spring semester down to two. We work in campus seven hours a day, five days a week relying on two teachers. Not only is it detrimental for students because each teacher has a certain skill on their field of training, which means students get limited education, which is also an extreme burden on the teachers. The Laney College Cosmetology Program is one of the last cosmetology schools in East Bay. But if this continues without our help, there will no longer be one. Thank you.
Next, we have Lucian Borcheski.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. As she said, my name is Lucian Borcheski. I'm here to bring attention to issues that I and many of my fellow students in the welding department here at Laney have been experiencing while attending classes here. Most of these issues have been affecting our ability to be successful in our academic and technical pursuits here. These issues include the reduction of classes. Some of our students have been forced to wait semesters in order to graduate when they should only have to wait a max a semester. This is because the teaching slots for the welding department have been reduced. And the professors have been forced to combine some of the classes in order to be able to graduate students and have the classes offered in the first place. Secondly, the fire alarm system on Laney. Back in two thousand nineteen, it was deemed non-functional, the full system. And I'm sure you guys know you were forced to hire security guards to patrol the campus to make sure things did not burn down. As of right now, students have not been updated as to what's happening with that. Has it been fixed? Has it been repaired? Is it functional? If I were to pull a fire alarm, would it go off? Would it have? Would the fire department be contacted as is required by law? Also, in the welding department, the air handling system, which is very important as we are dealing with a process that generates gases that are hazardous to our health as we wear P P E to protect us. But part of that system is the ventilation system, which circulates fresh air and protects us. Part of that system has been broken for over a year and little has been done to repair this. If any more on this system were to break, we would be forced to shut down classes. And as many of the other career and technical ed departments here, without the lab, our education comes to a halt. We need to be in lab in order to learn to weld. And if it shuts down, that again delays us once again in learning and progressing our careers. Finally, the heating and cooling systems. Right now, there is a temporary machine outside that is supposedly providing cooled and heated water. However, the cosmetology department still doesn't seem to have heated water. And we also are unsure if we have heating and cooling. And that's also another safety issue in the welding department. Because we're dealing with processes that create a lot of heat. And if it is too hot in the welding department, that is dangerous for our health. And again, it's a safety issue. All of this, my feelings aren't isolated, as some of the other departments have already talked. I also have signed documents by most of the welding department as well as machining, cosmetology, culinary with many of the students. They give another one, the Wood Tech Department with, you know, hundreds of students who've signed this. And we're dealing with these issues and they are getting in the way of our careers. We ask that you work to correct these issues and help to maintain the student population to make classes worth it for people to take them here. We're directly affected by all of these. And if our needs are not being met, why should the college exist? Thank you.
Next, we have Sach Alvarez.
Hello, mainly just put my name down just in case we needed extra time on behalf of the welding department. I believe Lucian did a great job at really emphasizing everything that we really wanted to highlight today. And also just to really add to his point on the amount of time slots we have for teachers, just to give you a little more perspective from the welding side of things. Because we have so few instructors that are there for us, a big component of us being able to understand like all the various positions and all the various techniques while we're welding includes really having a professor to show us how to do it, you know, what it's supposed to look like. And just from our own experience, really, we really only have like one time during each of our classes to have a professor really give us one-on-one time. So we really feel if we can have more help from professors, either by giving them more time or adding more staff available, this would really allow us to be successful. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have Camilla Ballard.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm here. First of all, I'd like to say that I am very proud to be a student at Laney College. It's a very wonderful institution that I feel that is not given enough credit. It's a service to the community. It's a service to people that are trying to advance their lives, their careers, as you've just heard from, you know, my constituents, my fellow classmates, my professor, that we do not have the adequate teacher-student ratio, the functions of the ventilating system, security. Everything that was mentioned, I just want to echo it. And just let you know that Laney was founded, you know, to be a trade school, you know, to, to help people to advance and to make it, you know, founded in nineteen twenty seven, became public over seventy years ago. And the motto of Laney is to dream, to flourish and to succeed. And so I just want to take this time to to stress that something is not right, you know, obviously you've heard more than one time this evening about the, the lack of resources that are going into this trade school to help the community to grow and to further. I understand that there's a deficit. I understand that there are some things that need to be worked out, but I want to just bring everyone's attention, you know, back to the foundation of why the school exists and, and just, you know, maybe take a pause there that our dreams are kind of, you know, being diminished and we're struggling to get these hands-on skills that we need in order to advance and in order to make our dreams manifest, flourish and to ultimately succeed. So I'll close by saying that I know that the trustees, the chairman, the president, there's, there's a monumental task possibly at hand based on what I've heard. You know, in terms of budgets, but I'm a believer that where there is a will, there is a way. We here are all gathered together, you know, to hear what is going on, what can be done. And I believe that if we all, you know, brainstorm and maybe even think outside of the box, I know that my fellow students are here today. Classmates are here today and, you know, whatever we can do, please, you know, let us, we, we don't want future students to have to endure or to get left behind. Thank you so much for your time. And we really appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to you all tonight. Thank you.
Next, we have Sarah Reed Guy.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking your time to listen to us speak on these issues. I'm also representing the Laney Trade Program. I'm coming from the Wood Technology Department. And we're encountering a lot of the same issues that you heard these other students speak on, particularly instructor number and student teacher ratio. This is further exacerbated by an enrollment issue that the Wood Technology Department has. This allows more students to register for the program, which is really wonderful in a way. There's a lot of enthusiasm. The program is growing. But there's too many students and it's a huge safety risk to both the students and the teachers. We're operating heavy machinery and we are unskilled at the beginning. We are beginners operating very dangerous machinery in a dangerous environment. And without proper supervision, this could potentially cause serious injury. And honestly, I'm surprised that. And honestly, I'm surprised it hasn't, which isn't to denigrate our teachers' ability. They're doing an amazing job, but they just have too many students to properly supervise. And we've brought this up with our dean and they've freed up a little bit of funding to bring in an assistant. But even this isn't enough to cover what we have going on. And there have been semesters where classes fully do not have an instructor. Right now, level one and level two are taught concurrently with the same instructor in the same space at the same time with about double the students in each level that they would normally have. And even that normal level, when I speak to my professors, they say it's too many students. So there's a real enrollment and teacher issue there of class time, class number, how many instructors we have. Um, and it poses a real risk to life and limb. Um, and I know that there's a lot of will from the students. And we're here and a lot of the trade students are here. And I think within the Laney community, I don't know if the trade school really feels like it gets the resources that it needs. Really appreciate all of your time in this. And I know that you have a very difficult job balancing all of these competing interests. And I appreciate you listening to my concerns tonight.
Next, we have Indra England.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm also in the cosmetology department. I'm going to leave my mask on because I'm only on day seven recovering from COVID. And I don't have too much new to add from the cosmetology department. I just think that a lot of historically and potentially going forward students in the cosmetology department are people who tend to be marginalized. And it makes me fear for the future of those people not being able to get an education at a low cost and succeed doing something that they really care about. Um, you know, we, I'm one of the classes that came in during COVID. And we became accustomed to not being able to work on people. Uh, but as soon as we were back on campus and uh, conceptually able to work with live human beings, we're not able to do so. So a lot of us feel very unprepared going out after graduation this semester. Uh, I do appreciate your time and thank you very much for listening to what I had to say.
Next, we have Latonya Carpenter.
Good evening, good evening, um, all of, to all of the members on, of trustees, on the board of trustees. My name's Latonya Carpenter. I am also an instructor at, in cosmetology. And I just came to lend my voice as that of the students and the department. Um, I've been here several years and the administration has done a wonderful job on, on uh, making sure that we have what we need within the department. But the um, there's been no upgrades since I've been there and I've been there over fifteen years. Um, and I, I would just like to ask you if at any point the trustees can come and do a visit and see what we're working with to see if there can be something that we can do um, to either get us a new facility or something. Um, I remember that at some point we were going to have a new building. We were going to be in a new building and I believe that the funding went to the um, the football field. And so I don't know what happened after that, but we're still struggling and um, cleaning every night. But it, it's, you know, as much as we really try, it is very difficult. And our students really deserve, um, you know, they deserve a, uh, an even nicer place to, to learn. So I'm just going to ask you to please, if you can, um, come out and visit us. And we'd love to, to service you and greet you with students with. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ron Choi.
Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ron Choi. I've been a student at Laney College for over twenty-five years in wood technology. And um, I'd like to add to what Sarah said about the program now. Uh, I won't mention what it was used to be like, but right now there are too many students with a number of instructors. The enrollment system allows, uh, there are two classes that, that meet at the same time in the one room. With Tech ten and with Tech twenty. And these are beginning students and the second semester students. And there's, and so there could be up to thirty students. Fortunately, doesn't happen. Fifteen, twenty students, a couple of instructors. It's not safe. We're, as, as Sarah said, we're using learning, they're learning to use heavy machinery. I, you know, you can injure yourself really fast. Uh, and instructors are supposed to watch, monitor the students when they use the machinery and machinery is in two rooms. So you need two instructors, one in each room. Um, and there's, there's not enough instructors for the number of students. In addition, there is another class that meets in an adjoining room, the computer lab, uh, wood tech, thirty and forty, and they're learning to write programs to run the uh, computer-controlled machines. And the instruct, right now, there used to be a separate instructor for that class. So they meet in a separate room, fine. Now, there is no separate instruction. The instructors who are supposed to be monitoring the students using machinery are the same instructors teaching that class. So part of the time, they're in this other room, a third room, not in the shop. So it's just totally unsafe. I mean, it's really a safety issue. You're just, it's just a disaster waiting to happen. Thank you.
That is all the public comments for tonight.
Thank you very much, Sasha, and thank you to everyone who came out to speak to the trustees tonight. We really appreciate you. Let's go ahead and move to chancellor's reports. Chancellor Jackson.
Good evening, Anna. Okay. I have to make sure I keep my hands off the microphone, Nick. So um, first of all, um, under the chancellor's report, um, for those students that are here, um, I'd like to encourage you to meet with the administration at Laney College. And even if it means that involves uh, members at the district office. I think there's uh, miscommunication on, on a lot of different fronts. And even though we can't address it by law during the public session, you make your comments and we have to address them at a separate time. We can't do them now and I want you to understand that. And it isn't that we, we don't want to, but by law it states that public comment is just that, public comment, and then we can take action. So what I'm going to do next is ask the presidents um, to make a, a short um, presentation. Um, I know that tonight, uh, Dr. Stacy Scherz is sitting in for uh, President Angelica Garcia, um, who is attending the Santa Rosa Community College District and is not here. So I'm going to start with Stacy as the first one. Then I'll go to Merritt College, Dr. Johnson. Uh, then the next person would be College of Alameda, Dr. Bajrami. And then we'll end with Laney College, Dr. Besikov. So with that, Dr. Scherz, if you'd like to begin for Berkeley City College.
Thank you, chancellor. Uh, Dr. Garcia is not feeling well, so she's, she's at home under the weather uh, today, not even in Santa Rosa. Uh, but I'm glad to be here. Good evening, uh, board president, trustees, chancellor and chancellor's cabinet and community. Uh, just in addition to the news for the board, I'd just like to share, as Mazen was sharing earlier today, uh, four of our students went to the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. They were very excited and motivated. And two of them decided to run for president and vice president during elections right now at BCC. So elections are going uh, until eleven fifty-nine PM tomorrow. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
I thought I was going to set the record for brief, for brevity. Beat me to it. Um, good evening, uh, President Delphine Polk, uh, chancellor, board of trustee members, colleagues and community. Um, ASMC President Hogan did a fantastic job. Um, she mentioned two of the things that I was going to talk about, uh, namely, um, the Cesar Chavez event and the job that the Merritt, uh, ASMC did down at the um, SSCCC. So I'll, I'll just focus my remarks on a new partnership. Talk about the community, Merritt and the community, a new partnership um, with the Oakland Housing Authority that uh, on April fourth, our outreach team, uh, went down to the Lockwood, a garden, uh, housing village. Uh, that's on sixty-six and East Fourteenth, for those of you familiar with Oakland, uh, to support our young people participating in a national esports tournament. Um, that was put on uh, for the Department of Housing and Urban Development Assisted Students. Now, the overarching goal of our partnership is to support the post-secondary education uh, into our tech and cybersecurity pathways. Um, this event was co-sponsored by STEAM Sport, an organization that utilizes esports to promote science, tech, engineering arts and math. And given that many uh, students in Oakland, particularly those who um, are assisted by HUD site factors such as transportation equipment, lack of quality instruction, as barriers to entering STEAM fields. Uh, we're particularly proud to be a part of such an exciting and forward-thinking project. And we are also working toward providing virtual and face-to-face course offerings at uh, HUD sites. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks for the evening.
Good evening, President Delphine Polk, and I think I have this on, trustees, chancellor Jackson, colleagues and members of community. Tonight I'll focus on the economic aspects of the engagement at College of Alameda. And this is close to my heart as an econ professor. So the College of Alameda and the PCCD joined the Alameda Chamber and Economic Alliance uh, event that was hosted um, to provide the Alameda State of the City two thousand twenty-three. It was a great event. Um, we have been participated several year in such event. This year again was aboard the USS Hornet. We have a really robust groups of um, uh, faculty, admin and um, also classified professional. Alameda Mayor Mary Lynn Ezzy Ashkra began her keynote address to a packed house. It was a sold-out event, extolling the city's many attractive attributes. And COA is really lucky to be part of this city. Um, she also emphasized the Dignity Village Project, the transitional housing development that is really close to College of Alameda and a recent twelve-point-three million development grant. The mayor lauded the city council's support of local economic development and recognized the several innovative businesses that recently have moved to Alameda. To this end, Alameda Chamber of Economic Alliance is hosting a power lunch and learn on Thursday, April thirteenth, to delve into Alameda's employment outlook and to see how College of Alameda can address workforce needs through innovative programs and services that can help business discover the next rock star employee through internships, apprenticeships, placement services and more. We're looking forward to this um, lunch and learn, a meeting with uh, local businesses and partnering with them uh, to improve the economic outlook at um, the city of Alameda. Thank you.
Good evening, chancellor, uh, members of the board and colleagues in education and valued members of our public and our students. Uh, just wanted to share that a lot of things are going on on the Laney campus right now. And uh, certainly, uh, just wanted to express appreciation for the board's approval of the many projects that are part of the ninety-day list uh, that were approved at the last meeting, uh, and just want to say we look forward to that work beginning and continuing. Um, the theme of my report this evening is collaboration. And I wanted to touch on a couple of things that really kind of brought that to my, my attention over the last couple of weeks. Within our campus, uh, we actually are moving forward and making great progress on our educational master plan. Uh, next week, it is going to our college council for second reading and certainly looking forward to uh, to bringing that to the board's attention. But that's involved really um, not, not just the work of our college council, but our two college senates and our student government. And the feedback that we've received on this plan, our, our direction for moving forward has been very constructive and really with an eye toward the future and making Laney College a great place for students. Along the way, there's been other collaboration that's been great. Uh, this past Friday, I was pleased to attend performance at the theater. And as always, Michael Torres and Alejandro Acosta um, do a great job. But this time, the collaboration wasn't just theater. It was our media arts department in uh, filming and providing special effects. It was our music department and our dance department providing a musical background for the performance. It seems like every time Professor Torres puts on a performance, it doesn't just involve other, other uh, departments at Laney, but the community. And it's something that certainly does not go unnoticed by me. Finally, um, this past Thursday and uh, Oakland Chinatown, there was the um, career readiness bootcamp that took place. And the collaboration that was there also was another thing that was something to behold. And I was very humbled to give opening remarks. In addition to uh, the external partners that we had with the Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Oakland Asian Cultural Center, our ESOL Department, our Employment Services Center, our um, Asian Pacific Student Success Program Office led by Dr. David Lee, and parts of our student services all came together really to provide something that was great for students. And in the area of outreach, it seems like if Kim Gonzalez is there, it's going to be a success. Laney College is a place where a lot of collaboration happens, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, presidents. I'd like to turn it back over to the president of the board.
Thank you, Chancellor Jackson. We'll go ahead and move to presentations, Department of Education Program Review. Dr. Vasconcelos.
Thank you. Director, it's on, Sasha, are you able to do the PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am. Just give me one minute and I will pull it up for you.
No worries. Thank you. I'll go ahead and start. Um, thank you. So, good evening, President Delphine Polk, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and our community members this evening. So we're excited to be here with you tonight. I'm here with our Director of Financial Aid for the District Office to talk about our program review. So you learn about financial aid in different ways as a board of trustees. And I think this time what we're doing is we're sharing from a very transparent level that there was a Department of Education Program Review. It's common, it happens in universities and colleges across the United States, and there's often findings. What I think the key thing that I'd like sort of to impart with you all is financial aid. Well, it looks like it's one department that's responsible for administering aid and so forth. When we talk about tonight, the program review that's occurred, it really is a cross-sectional, cross-college and district function in order to administer and to continue to administer financial aid for our students. So I think it's something that's a little bit different lens that you're going to see this evening. So we received, I think in your board packet, you have the letter that we received last September indicating that we were going to have a program review. Once again, that's normal processes and procedures, um, and, and sort of on a random basis. Um, we can, the DOE, the Department of Education came and conducted the program review. They um, did their analysis, had several different things, not uncommon like you would in an audit, where they're asking for different files and looking at processes and procedures across the district. As a result of that, on February first, we received a um, a letter with the findings. There were fifteen findings, as you've seen in your, um, in your packet. And within that, there was right, you know, corrective actions, if you will, um, that we need to do across. So what we're going to focus on is how we've addressed the corrective actions and also how, once again, it was really a cross-sectional and college and district approach in order to address this. So the areas of focus are administrative capabilities. I guess Sasha, are you just realized? Are you able to start the PowerPoint?
I have not. I'm sorry. I'm having issues. I'm sorry. Just give me one second. I apologize.
That's fine. I'll continue. So areas of focus for the program review are administrative capabilities. So do we have the infrastructure to administer Title IV funds, which is federal financial aid? And do we have it in the capacity to do so in a way as designed and regulated by the Department of Education? Cash management, are we awarding and dispersing in a timely manner? Are we doing also reconciliation of funds or awarding aid? Return of Title IV, consumer information and also other miscellaneous areas we're focused on. Our administrative capability, here she comes. Next slide. Oh, one more. One more past that. Should be administrative. Yeah, perfect. All right. So administrator administrative capabilities. Once again, this was a finding that came up. And what it's looking at is essentially what are our processes and procedures that we have in place? What are the practices? And then are we able to sort of administer aid, like I said, in a timely manner in part? So Ken started last year, last April. We also brought on a consultant, which is Huron, which you've heard about over time in August of 2022. They have been working together over time to address issues before the Department of Ed even began their program review. So as far as our ability to incapability, administrative capability, rather, things have been already addressed. So we're actually at a place now where this finding will be fully addressed by September in that procedures have been changed, practices have been revised. And there will be in between June and September, there'll be an evaluation of those so that we can then adjust again and sort of make sure we have full capabilities.
Thank you, Dr. Vasconcelos. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking time for us to discuss this very important issue. Federal financial aid, even though it may be federal, it does affect Cal grants and student success completion grants. So it has a wide range and impact on students as well as their, you know, for their enrollment, persistence, graduation and helping them to meet their daily costs. So Dr. Vasconcelos was talking about administrative capability. A couple of key areas that were addressed in the audit findings or the DOE program review is cash management. Cash management is one of the core functions of financial aid and entails things like reconciling funds, right, on a, essentially on a monthly basis, but also annually. And in the three findings that we categorize in this area or categorized under cash management. One was, we talked about internal controls. I mentioned reconciliation, making sure that we're dispersing funds to students in a timely manner. And by timely, you know, we request the money from the Department of Ed. We then need to, we have, we have three days after we receive the money to put it on their student account. And then 14 days for a fund student. So it's very, very time-driven. So we just need to make sure that we're on top of that. Also, when funds are returned from Bank Mobile, we have so much, we have a certain period of time to return those funds back to the Department of Ed or try to make, make those refunds available to students. So we have 45 days to get that done. And one of the findings was was related to that. So, and the third one was a late payment of a, for one student for Title IV refund. So as was mentioned, we've done a lot of work with Huron since last August when they really came on board to help us address the annual audit findings that we are having, the repeat findings, as well as information on the FICMET report and the accreditation, some of the information you might be familiar with. And so we already started in earnest to address many of these items. And, and so with the program review, we did a lot of additional things like revising our procedures, creating new ones, training staff, making sure we work with Huron to update our, reconfigure our system to address those concerns. Another area of focus was awarding of aid. A big one was making sure that we were awarding students their Pell Grant, particularly at the correct enrollment level. And so that was, we spent a lot of time, as the colleges will let you know this last six, eight months on making sure that students are being awarded correctly. And there's still work to be done, but Huron has provided a great deal of support. Sorry, too much. Oh, okay. Sorry. Sounds loud to me. So the findings here, like incorrect Pell Grant awards, you know, that's probably the largest finding in this area. And so it's received a great deal of attention from the district, from the colleges, as well as from Huron. So we're making a good, solid progress on this and should hopefully have this all squared away before the end of spring semester. Two other items that were not as, as, there was only one student related to satisfactory academic progress. This issue actually was resolved last August, September with Huron. So, but one thing you have to remember is the evaluation performed by the Department of Ed was for 2021 and 2122. So much the cleanup that we've been doing has been basically 2223 going forward. So, you know, had we had another year, we probably wouldn't have had many of these issues. And then the last one here is incorrect cost of attendance. That was related to awarding of less than halftime Pell Grants. So we've, we've spent a lot of time on resolving that one as well. And so so what, a key takeaway in the work that we've been doing very intentionally, very, very extensively is making sure the staff are trained. We have procedures in place, we have the setup in order. And, and then just continuing to assess, you know, how things are going to make sure that we're meeting our goals. Because the, the goal of the district, as well as, you know, my own personal goal and the colleges is making sure that we don't have repeat findings. Now, moving to federal return of Talfor funds, what this is, what this is in regards to, we had two findings related to this was not, well, first off, step back a little bit. Return Talfor is basically returning funds back to the Department of Ed for students who completely withdraw. And there's two different types of students that withdraw. There's the official withdrawals, the students who go through the process to drop a class or classes completely. And then there are unofficial withdrawals, students who stop attending the class, they may receive an F grade. And, and so it's incumbent upon the financial aid office to verify if those F grades were earned or unearned. If they were unearned, then we have to do a return Talfor refund calculation and return money to the Department of Ed. So the two findings, one was related to not using the correct actual, the institutional charges in the calculation, which affected the outcome. And the other issue was determining the last day of attendance for the unofficial withdrawals. So we, we have, we had a policy procedure document in place. We've revised that. And one of the things we're doing with Huron is, is moving away from doing manual calculations using a Department of Education tool to using the existing functionality and campus solutions so that we have the correct institutional charges, the enrollment information. And, and so we're going through the testing right now, the training. We have documentation in place for this. We're hoping to roll this out by, I would hope by June 1st. That's, that's what's on the narrative response, if you've seen that document to the Department of Ed. And that pretty much covers return Talfor. So I'll turn it back to Dr. Vasconcelos. Thank you.
Thank you. So consumer information. So as Ken mentioned, what they were looking at is the 2122 academic year. When we're looking at consumer information, this came up as a finding. This is related to the annual security report. We were in pandemic years, obviously, when they were looking at our files. And so we're not, we're not surprised about some of the findings. I'd like to add too, like when we're mentioning like this happened and this charge was incorrect, it's one student. It's not the entirety of our student population. So I think that's important. As far as the annual security report, one of the things that came up is when we finished our contract with the sheriff's office and before we had a Director of Public Safety, there was a lapse, right? And so it makes sense that the annual security report wasn't sent out on a timely matter, you know, as it should have been, because there was nobody in that space and holding it at that time. One of the things that's come up as a result of in making sure that we have the consumer information and all of these elements in place is the Chancellor's Work Group, which you started, I think, last year in 2022, has been reconvened for spring of 2023 to work on standard operating procedures, if you will, they might be called something else in the end, to look at financial aid, the administrative procedures, the practices, the timelines, and then also who's responsible. So for instance, for consumer information, part of it, you know, is in marketing and communications and what gets sent out. Part of it's in educational services, part of it's in public safety. And so it's all of us really taking responsibility, knowing what our activities are that we need to do, taking responsibility for them and then working across. So, so to make sure that we're, we're actually maintaining and adhering to Title IV regulations. The last one, which is, the last slide is miscellaneous. And basically this was late and inaccurate student enrollment reporting. So this, once again, it's a function and a reporting from admissions and records. And it's related to and impacts the financial aid, right? So it's another one of those that we'll be looking at and improving. So while we're addressing and readdressing and rewriting policies and practices and procedures, the, the manual that we end up or the standard operating procedures out of this Chancellor's Work Group, we're really sort of, it'll be our first actually in paralto district to have a document that multiple departments can go to, to know where in the administrative policies falls in my office, what are my responsibilities? And then how I impact even across some financial aid. You know, when I started, once again, I was saying this really is cross-functional, it's cross-district and cross-college, right? Where it's not just the financial aid office and their awarding of, you know, aid to students. So I'm really excited about the work that we're going to be doing over this next semester and into the summer. So it's open for questions.
Go ahead, VP Quillen. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So my question, I cannot get any sense of severity of the problem. I didn't hear much panic in your voice, so I assume it's, the sky's not falling. Or it may be falling, but it's only rain. So I, I, I don't know what the consequences are. And it are this, it seems like you have solutions to fix the problems and that, that's great. And I don't know how long that takes. Is it manageable with our current staffing and everything? Or that's kind of the gist of my questions.
Chancellor, do you want to take the first part?
I'll try to take the first part. We won't know until we get feedback from DOE. Some of these are repeat findings from previous years. And one of the things that the Department of Ed has done is institute a, a body of individuals that review our findings, review the recommendations, and they have the ability to put in place sanctions. They also have the ability to take away the district and the colleges' ability to even administer Title IV funds, which means that none of our students would be able to get financial aid in a number of different areas. I do not, my personal opinion is I do not think that they are going to take away our ability to provide Title IV funds. But there may be a possibility that they will, because we have repeat recommendations impose some type of function or some kind of penalty, financial penalty that would impact our general fund. We don't know until they review and give us their feedback. So they have a review board, just like with ACCJC. This is the first part where they came out, they did the site visit, they collected information, they gave us recommendations. We are responding to those recommendations. They will have a review of those recommendations and make a decision. But we, some of these are quite serious. But they've been around for a while with the district, which is why we're taking a different approach than we have in the past and really working out of my office with the Chancellor's Work Group to address this on a district-wide systemic level versus college A, you do this, college B, you do that. And I think that's a little different. But I'd also like for our financial aid director, Ken Lyra, and our Associate Vice Chancellor, Tina Vasconcelos, to speak because they've been in the weeds dealing with this. Sometimes meetings twice a week and then they brief me once a week on what we've been doing. It has taken that kind of approach. It isn't something where you say, okay, you go and do it and come back and tell me when it's done. It has been an approach that has taken a lot of due diligence. Ken has been working on this. You, you will see in your packet, we asked for an extension. It was not granted. So we submitted an incomplete packet to even start with. So we're, and I just think that was unfair because I don't think it really gave the district adequate time to provide all the documentation. And if you looked at the documentation that we had to do on the first, I think some of the financial aid directors and the Vice Presidents of Student Services were meeting two and three times a week to try, we had 12 working days to get a volume of data over a two-year period to the Department of Ed. And as I said, I attached the letter that I wrote asking for the extension, which was denied and they continued on. And then they followed up with the visit. And so this is a result of the visit and the findings that they provided and our response to those findings. So I don't know if there's anything else either of you would like to add or if there's additional questions.
I'll add something and then turn it over to Ken. So I think that, yes, so it was a lot of work to do. And, and I, you know, you know, in my role as Vice President, I've been here for quite some time and working with financial aid in the district, actually for about 17 years, right? During that period of time, I have not seen such a cross-section of folks come together to work on this. It is much like what I've done as an ALO, to be honest, in working with the colleges and the other ALOs and departments and so forth. We've got finance, we've got marketing and communications, we've got the colleges, financial departments, the vice presidents, we got district financial aid, my office and ed services, all sort of working together on a common interest. So for me, I think, you know, do you, do we have capacity? Yeah, we all are busy, of course, and the financial aid offices are busy and we're all working on it, we're all doing it. And so I think that what we have right now is a team, a leadership team that's made it a priority so our staff can work with us to solve this. You know, like the Chancellor said, we had to really sort of mobilize quickly. We got our letter February 1st. Our first submission was due, well, actually it was due February 28th, was the first submission, which was on the consumer information. And then on April 3rd was when we needed to upload evidence and say that we were either finished or we were continuing to work. So that's why you see in your status, some of the items are completed, some are going to be in June. One of them is in September. So I'll turn it over to Ken then.
Yes, we have been working actively on resolving these issues. And so I think you can see a lot of activity in the next couple of months to tighten up the procedures, make sure staff are trained and ready and, you know, getting the work completed. Also, if there's any kind of system setup with Huron, you know, I envisioned all this stuff actually being done by July 1st, but there's a few, few odds and ends, like the internal control assessment that we want to basically, you know, evaluate our progress overall to see, you know, where we are, if there's any gaps. But yeah, there's, there's nothing, this is totally fixable. I'm not surprised by, I think, most of the findings, maybe, maybe all of them actually. Because I have seen them on prior audits that I was, you know, the other, well, I've been doing financial aid for almost 30 years in June. So I have seen these at different schools along the way. So no surprise, but we certainly can tighten it up and, and then put it behind us. That's, that's the plan.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Withrow, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. In your estimation, how much of this has been aggravated, if you will, because of the pandemic? Or you had people working at home? Where you had people working at home and couldn't have the interaction that you normally would have and are currently having in your organization?
You know, I'm, I'm sure they had some impact. It's kind of hard to quantify. I mean, unfortunately, the period that they're evaluating or that was evaluated was right during the pandemic, you know, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. So, you know, I can tell you when I, when I transitioned to working completely remote with financial aid in our district, the financial aid office, because we do a lot of work already, a lot of work with computers, and, you know, we, we quickly transitioned to the remote environment. So there probably was some drop-off initially, but, but, but yeah, I, I don't think it, because some of these issues, remember, they're, they go back years, repeat findings. So, so there is an impact, but I just, I can't quantify that for you.
As again, a follow-on, how do we stand relative to other institutions of our size?
You know, that's a good question. I haven't actually taken a look at that. You know, the Department of Ed has a program review website where you can look at other colleges and, and see some of the information that they've not submitted, but you could see like the letters from the DOE to the college, and you can see their findings. And so you can kind of compare. I don't know of a district in the Bay Area that was audited by or had a program review recently from the DOE. I had a mini-program review when I was down in Southern California for different reasons. But, but yeah, I mean, you could, you could compare that easily. It's a public-facing website. Yeah, and I could provide that to you if you'd like.
Thank you. I'm gratified to hear that this is fixable. That's, that's actually really important to hear, because sometimes we've got problems in the district that we actually don't know how to fix. So knowing that you know how to fix this is really, that's great. What I'm curious about, and I'm asking this, I'm trying to elicit a, a response that's not defensive. So don't, please, please try not to read this as a, as an intense personal criticism, because it's not. You, you just got here in your positions a year ago, you know, et cetera. You inherit these challenges, but this challenge isn't new. LQ Harris, as Chancellor, had similar problems with financial aid. So going back some fifteen, sixteen, twenty years, something like that. And what I'm curious about then is this, if it's fixable, if it's a repeat, there's something to be learned about why we're not fixing things. So we, we, we bring it up, and then something happens where we drop the ball or something else happens. And so as a board member, I'm trying to understand more at a systemic and policy level, what is it that we as a board need to be doing to help the administration carry the ball across the line? And I, I'm, I'm really asking this in a, in a way that, that's trying to elicit curiosity. For why is it that in some situations where we even have resources like bond funding or like her funding, or in this case, you're saying this is fixable, we have, we have staff, we could do this. What is it that we can learn here so that we can change things on a more permanent basis? And then we're not back here in three years with another DOE audit? And then how do we, and, and this is a bigger question that I don't necessarily expect an answer from, but how do we then generalize that to the other problems that we have in the district that, in fact, are fixable? If we could keep our eye on it. So I, I'm just, you know, you're both pretty senior. Vice Chancellor, you've been here a long time, you've got a lot of experience. I'm drawing on your expertise. What, what can we learn here as a board to help you perform to the place where we all want to be performing? And, and this is as much to the Chancellor as it is to you. And again, I'm trying not to get anybody defensive.
Okay, perfect. Now, and that'll give you, you know, Ken hasn't been here as long, so he may not be able, and you have a different perspective. I have a different perspective from where I sit. I think one of the issues that I see perennially within the district has been lap. And, and again, like you don't take this personally or as something, but you asked the question. So I'm giving you my honest opinion from where I sit, is that administrators turnover. And you cannot, research shows it, practical experience, there's books about it. You know, you cannot take an organization from good to great without having a stability at your top leadership roles. So what the board can do is to make sure that when they hire someone, whoever that person is, that they provide the support and the training and the professional development that is necessary so that they're not here for eight months or two months or three months or a year. And looking at our history, I'm the longest-standing CEO that you've had in the last five years. That's not saying a lot about us as a district. And the reason that we have been able to do some of the things, I think, like get off of warning, go from probation to warning to being, you know, with no sanctions, taking care of our FIDMAT report that had seventy-eight recommendations, not being taken over by the state chancellor's office and a special trustee putting in place. The reason we've been able to do that is because you had me here for two years. April the sixteenth will be my two-year anniversary at the district. And the reason we've been able to accomplish things is because I've been here for two years. Ken, if Ken turns around next month and says, well, hey, this is too hard, I'm out of here, guess what? We're right back where we started with, with financial aid. And so we have got to develop the wherewithal, and it's not just the board, it's how we treat each other. We have got to learn that people want to be treated with respect. Just because you're an administrator doesn't mean you're the bad guy. Just because you're the faculty member advocating for your cause doesn't mean that you should be dismissed. Just like our students who came here tonight earnestly seeking answers. We have got to provide the forums for those, and we haven't done a good job of systemically and ongoing doing that. And we're trying to do that now. I think we've made great strides, but we aren't there yet. And I think that really is, from my point of view, has been something, we are a great institution. We have great people, but we don't always treat each other as we should. And we don't always get the support that we need on whatever level you're at.
Thank you.
So I'd like to go behind the Chancellor and agree. I think, so if you look at who you have in your top leadership in the chancellor's office and the district office or other, how many interns do we have in place, right? And so once again, you know, whether folks are interim and they stay in their interim roles, or if they roll off because somebody else comes in or what have you, that impacts all of this. So right now, there's an excellent team, we've all pulled together, we're working together. I'm confident that we'll develop the, the SOPs and that we'll actually have in a document. It doesn't, I can't guarantee you, you know, in two months or three months, then there's a new person to hand that document to, right? So I think that as a board, not only, you know, in the chancellor's role, which we're, you know, going into a hiring process, but I think that the stability of the district and our ability to really impact this across means that we need hiring in all positions so that we have, you know, folks that are willing to step into the difficult conversations in a way that's freer than potentially an interim has that capacity.
If I can just follow on. So I agree with both of these. And I'll note that as a board, we start every meeting with a, a restatement of our commitment towards civility and collegiality. We do that, and it sounds like it's like this repetitive rote thing, but I think we actually really mean it. And that this board has really demonstrated over the last two years that we really mean it. I think the other thing that I would add on though, and it's thinking about the continuity, it's continuity of function. Sometimes, look, you know, we, we're losing a college president, great college president to another great district. Okay, that's just gonna happen sometimes. And so part of what that means is we provide opportunities for growth and, and promotion and change, but we need to build in the continuity of function, and it can't simply be dependent on the person at top. We need redundancy of function, and we need to really rely on the people we know are going to be here for the long haul. And frankly, that's the staff and the faculty. And as much as we love it, great administrators, and we want them to stay, you don't. It's part of the culture. You go to conferences at the league and so forth, and there are all these sessions on how to move up, how to move on. And in some districts, that's more and less true. So I think it's a complicated thing. In this particular case, we've had this repeat for twenty years, and so there's something there in addition. And so I, I think it's a complicated story. I'm really appreciating the thoughtful conversation. Thank you.
And I just want to end with that. You're absolutely right, trustee Ewing. The other thing is Peralta has operated on a system of oral history versus having written standard operating procedures. So when the swirl happens and people leave, even though we got staff and we got faculty that stay, they have no book of what to do. That's the other component. That's the part that we're addressing this year. Is that we know there's going to be turnover, but we don't rely on, oh, I'm a new person, go talk to Cindy. She'll tell you how to do it. Well, what if Cindy's been doing it wrong all these years? It perpetuates the problem, because Cindy was taught wrong. And that's some of the things that we're seeing in financial aid, is that there's no document that says how to do this, and they're being taught by people that have done it, but maybe they weren't doing it right. Or maybe they were, but it, other people didn't, and there's no standard. And so that's what we're trying to do now is really focus on that. That's what the Chancellor's Work Group is looking at is, how do we codify that so that when we onboard people, they can look at and have something to reference? That is the standard, not just because Joey told me this is how I do it.
For years, there was this pejorative term used called the Peralta Way, which was a thousand workarounds. That thing doesn't work, I'll just go around it, as opposed to let's get a standard operating procedure that we can agree on. Try it. If it doesn't work, fix it. Don't work around it. So thank you, Chancellor.
Chancellor, if I may, I was going to ask, that was going to be my question. How do we move forward? What are we planning to do to ensure that this doesn't happen again?
So to move forward with this, the Chancellor's Work Group, which I think was something that Dr. Vasconcellos mentioned, is an ad hoc committee. I chair that committee, I convene it, basically, and then we brainstorm about how are we going to address the issues? And this is, it's, it's not just financial aid, we're also looking at other areas that we need to codify. Purchasing, you know, accounts payable, invoicing, ICCs, contracts. All of those things are items that we're going to look at, but the primary one is financial aid. And we're, I'm, I'm not a subject matter expert, so we're going to elicit the support of our subject matter experts to come up with those solutions, and then they're going to be addressed in a SOP, standard operating internal document. Doesn't require board approval or need to be put in an AP. And that is, we're kind of, going to become our, kind of our touchstone to how we go about training. And if we modify things, that document will be the one that's modified. Not having four different documents or five different documents, if you count all the sites. That's our way forward.
Thank you. Trustee Reese, and then trustee Gutsanis Biko, and then trustee Yannis.
Thank you, Dr. Vasconcellos, and thank you, Ken. First of all, I just have to say, Ken, it is so wonderful to actually meet you in person. And the reason I say that is because I had so many conversations with Ben Levitt, our auditor, and I had so many conversations with our ACCJC visiting team. And you have absolutely no idea how many times your name came up with such gratitude and such praise. So you are distinctly in my mind, this kind of really extraordinary individual. So thank you. I know you're new, but you have done so much in such a short period of time and really kind of helping everybody get through all that we've been going through. And then now you have something else to kind of help get us through. So aside from that, now, this is serious, right? This is absolutely, absolutely serious. And one of the things that I just want to make clear, especially to our new board members, is that there's so many things that keep coming up in this district. But this financial aid and these financial aid problems have been showing up in the annual financial statements since two thousand and four, and they have been perennial. They keep on coming up in different severities. And clearly, and we saw them in our last financial reports, to our annual reports. And so I think I say that specifically because this problem, as well as many of the other problems that we hear about from a variety of different individuals, this didn't happen in the past couple of years. These have been entrenched problems at this district for such a long time. What has been amazing and truly wonderful is the amount of work that has happened in the past couple of years because of all of you to actually get through this. But I think sometimes we forget that these problems didn't just all of a sudden emerge right now, and we're barely fixing it, but they've been here for such a long time, and we have to keep on remembering that because we seem to be asking and demanding so much from people to fix these problems when these are problems that have been the result of myriad reasons that have just actually morphed into monstrosities, I guess you could say. And I, I would also say that a large part of this, and this is what I'm hearing, has been Huron too, right? So you asked earlier, what's the difference now between then, the leadership, the work, Huron, being able to kind of deal, so, so bringing all of the pieces together to make it all work, which has been part of the problem. And the question that I have, and I have a couple more comments, but the question that I have is, Huron was already working, Chancellor, with some of our financial problems in the previous audits. So we knew that financial aid was going to be an issue. Had they already been working on it? Or did we kind of have them do the financial models, and then we didn't have them do all of these? Or were these a little latent part of the process and solution that they were already working on? That's one question.
They, these things were not identified as distinctly as they, as distinctly as they were when we first hired Huron. We hired them to facilitate moving from the old platform to a new HRM module and to a financial module. So they were not looking at the internal processes at the colleges. They were looking at moving us from one platform to the next. During the process of doing that, some of these items did come up, but not to the extent that they have now with the review by the Department of Education. So now what we have to do is we have to go back, look at the new system that we migrated to, look at the recommendations that were made by the Department of Ed, map out what we're doing with Huron working with us to see how we can interface that with the system that we've migrated to. So that means that we're probably going to have to change the way we do business so that it's standardized across the district, which it is not now, which is, we're experiencing problems right now, currently. But that is what the issue is. And we're also looking at putting in things. I met with PeopleSoft Oracle last Thursday, and we've identified And we've identified, you know, they talk in a different language, but the bottom line is they have a component under PeopleSoft that looks at the modules that we gave them, and we say we have a problem here, 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 and here because they did it the way we described it. But now that we've actually implemented it, it is not the most efficient method. So now we've got to go back and say, yes, you got the big picture right, but there's a lot of little pieces out here that you did not take into consideration, and we need to make some changes. So they've agreed to that, but you know, that's gonna take dollars and cents um to be able to do that. But we want to do it in collaboration with our colleagues, our classified professionals, our administrative teams, so that we get it right, that we aren't just going back and say, we're gonna follow this model, but we're gonna take the time to get it right so that when we implement it, it's something everybody agrees to, everybody is trained on it. It goes back to our, you know, professional development and learning center. We have a module, we have a document, we have a SOP. So we won't be bringing this back to you in another year, two years, or three years. We're gonna fix it. We're gonna do it right. Correctly, right, say right, correctly.
And and given what you had just said, and also the the kind of training that has been also a bit of issue in the past, this is just obviously taken under advisement, but given the seriousness and the severity of the situation, if Huron could be or help be the trainer or helped with the training, I think that that would be great. And lastly, and this is the last thing I'm going to say, we're actually very, very fortunate that this this happened. I think it could have been far worse. Um, and the fact that they're giving us this opportunity is good. And the reason why I say we're fortunate is because we have to deal with it, just like ACCJC and all of those recommendations were the blessings that we needed to do to be able to own our problems, really dig deep and actually start fixing the problems that had been hidden for such a long time. So I think that we're doing this right now. And again, thank you all, but we're here to support you to make sure it happens well.
Thank you, trustee Reese. Just you go, Thomas Brito.
Thank you, President Polk. Uh, yeah, this is, uh, well, thank you for your presentation, um, and thank you for all the work you're doing to try to fix these issues. Um, I, they're very serious, um, given the impact they could have on Title IV. And so I'm wondering a couple of things, which it would have been helpful to know, and maybe this is just me as a new trustee, to know which ones are repeat findings from previous DOE reports. So to actually kind of better understand the um, the seriousness of, you know, which of these have we been asked to fix before, which of them have we not fixed so that I can really maybe prepare myself for what might be coming from the DOE next? And then, um, I guess I, given the seriousness, also just wondering about, it seems actually what you said, Chancellor, uh, around um our students here today and having ways in which we can collaborate and hear from different partners, it just makes me wonder, the audit can't be the first time we knew about, or a audit shouldn't be the first time we hear about these problems. And so wondering about how the line staff, how classified staff, how administration can better be the canary in the coal mine, and when that actually, when the canary in the coal mine sings, then we know that something needs to happen prior to getting to an audit. So really want to understand how how we can do that better. Um, and then, uh, in terms of the uh standard operating procedures, well, I'm wondering if we can get a report back in June or September when this is, when some of these completion dates were mentioned, just to see how things are going. Um, and also then, um, how do we know that they're working? Um, how do we know that once the fixes are put in place, is there a way to check that that they're working over the next, you know, so amount of time? And then lastly, um, the standard operating procedures, I would love to be able to have those come back as a way of like, how do we fix this problem going forward?
Do you want to answer, Chancellor?
I would, I was just gonna say, we can provide you with a copy of the report, the full report, which is voluminous, I will say. Um, but it it gives you every item. I think it's like, what, seventy-eight, eighty pages long? You know, something like that. And it identifies in each of those. But if you guys know off the top of your head which ones were, you know, repeat findings or not, and then we always come back to the board, just like we're providing, this was due on Monday. I believe it was the third. We will, once we submit it, they will review it. They will give us an action letter, what whatever they're gonna tell us they're gonna do. And then they will tell us when they're gonna come back to check to see if we implemented those. That's kind of the process. Um, and we always try to make sure we get it to the board either before it goes out or like today, we're, you know, we went out on Monday of last week, I'm sorry, and this was our next board meeting. So we provide you to the board now.
So Ken might be able to say which other report ones, the repeat ones, but one of the things that I think that's important to mention, um, because I hear you about the canary and the, you know, in the mine. The colleges were operating independently and trying to address this individually. So the colleges all asked for technical assistance from the Department of Ed and received it and have been working with um, our program leads um over years. And the vice presidents and the financial aid departments, and when we've had somebody at the district office, which has not been consistent, there was a gap from two thousand eighteen to two thousand uh twenty-two. Um, we didn't have a district financial aid director and then, but as a result of the technical assistance that we asked for with the DOE, we actually hired, well, we tried to hire initially. We have been in the process of hiring four financial aid directors at the colleges based on their recommendation. So I think what's different this time, you know, I'm repeating myself, but so I apologize, but I think what's different this time is that we're all working together across the district. It's, you know, I was just vice president, right? So was in a different seat, same issues. And I'm seeing a very different um approach this time, and I feel like it's more solid. I feel like the standard operating procedures, and we are bringing in staff, we're bringing in um class, uh, the classified professionals as well as the financial aid directors at the colleges. My team, my admissions and records classified professionals here at the district are steeped in this work as well because we have impact in this as well. So so I just wanted to add that I, we didn't share that because it's not part of this, but the colleges have been trying to address this, and I, like I said, I think it's, you know, the struggle has been uphill because we've been doing it solely, you know, in different approaches. Thank you.
Yes, I would just add that, you know, besides the the absence of a district director for four years um in twenty-one, and I think April of twenty-one, we lost two uh technical analysts at the district. And um, you know, and we replaced them, um, we replaced them uh with a consultant. But you know, there was no, there was very little time to uh, you know, transferring knowledge before they left uh, but uh, and this consultant started. So that created a huge gap. I mean, when when he went from, you know, two full-time staff who knew what the system and everything to a consultant who knew the system, but maybe not our business processes, so. But uh, to answer your question, trustee, trustee Reese, uh, Reese. So the audit findings that come to my mind from the twenty-one to twenty-two uh uh reports, uh, one was the NSLDS enrollment reporting. So we know that's a an issue we need to resolve. Uh, there was a secondary confirmation, which means we need to basically make sure that uh, that students who are packaged are being evaluated for accuracy, right? That goes to finding uh four on the DOE program review. Um, and then also, um, uh, I I think the secondary reviews, it was for reconciliation, reconciliation was the other one. So uh, I know uh, one of the colleges addressed that back in October. I think the other colleges working on that presently. So the hope is that the the those items, there was one more, or maybe that was it. Those items will be behind us. There's gonna take a little time on the NSLDS one because of some issues, challenges we're having with the Department of Ed. Uh, it's not at the college level. It's with uh the processor, federal processor. But we certainly can update the the board trustees, um, you know, however much you you'd like updates. But, you know, when we hopefully wrap up most things by July, by June first.
Thank you. Mr. Yohannes?
Uh, at this point, my questions have been addressed, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments, colleagues? Okay, thank you so much.
So our second agenda item uh in terms of presentations is by Volt's company, and we'll start with um IVC, Atheria Smith will make the introductions. And uh, I believe AJ is going to follow up um with the presentation by Volt's.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, President Delphi Polk, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues, and the Peralta community. Since Volt's was selected, we have been moving at a very aggressive pace. This application is due in July, July third, along with our other documents that go into the state um Chancellor's office. So we've been meeting with Volt's and their team, which includes JK Architects, uh, DGS, uh, two to three times a week, and they've made weekly presentations at our cabinet meeting just to keep everyone informed on their progress. This evening, AJ Yun and JK Architects will give you an update covering the, the uh, the student surveys, the student needs, the characteristics at each college, because each college, as all of you know, are very, very different, and they have very different needs. Um, she will review the sites in the process of zeroing in on the right site so that we can be most competitive. So AJ?
Sasha, can you bring up the slides, please?
You got it.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for having us uh this evening, um trustees, translators, and presidents. Uh, we're very excited to share you the progress that we have made uh in terms of student housing feasibility planning for PCCB. Next slide, please. Before we share any further updates today, we want to make sure that we are covering the Y um part of the strategic um planning for student housing. This is the very first step that we do uh whenever we uh initiate the engagement for feasibility planning because we want to establish the North Star, the guiding North Star that you are going to look up to in a variety of decision-making moments, not just um within the feasibility planning process, but also throughout the construction, if you go forward and even beyond opening and maintaining, operating um the potential of student housing. And the chancellor leadership has shared with us that the strategic object, objectives of the student housing at PCC uh would be as follows. To increase student retention, to address basic needs, foster diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging values, and also establish a healthy relationship with the local community. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the strategic objectives is a beginning point of this process. And this diagram illustrates not only the current engagement, but overarching a student housing development process from the very beginning till the opening day. Uh, where the arrows are colored in blue is what we're currently working on. And today, we're excited to share the findings from the market and demand analysis, as well as the site analysis, which involved uh information about the demand, students' unit preferences, our understanding of the site options and the direction that have has been made on considering the findings from the analyses, as well as the grand uh consideration of the grand competitiveness. Next slide, please. Um, as uh IVC, Atheria, uh, Smith briefly mentioned about the SB one sixty-nine, we are currently, this is the, our urgent uh timeline that we're currently working on. And there are a couple of strings that comes with this program. One is that the district needs to identify one college to put on the application. So we have um completed the market and demand analysis, which we're going to share the highlights of the findings. And we also conducted the site analysis uh considering which campus will be most grant competitive within the given timeline uh with the July third application deadline. And I would like to mention that we have um the direction from the leadership to move forward with the one selected site. And the three remaining colleges will continue the process that you just saw in the bigger picture um to complete the feasibility planning to examine alternative funding options. So today, we'll show you the findings from the analysis as well as how we got to that site selection. Um, in those um grand uh evaluation criteria, there are elements that we can influence and there are criteria items that we cannot influence. For instance, we're not gonna move to a different geographic region to be more competitive or have weaker competitor in this program. Um, however, we can influence the cost per bed uh within this uh application, the uh, and also the project timeline by considering which side it would be the most shovel-ready as quickly as possible, as well as the rent. And I would like to also mention that when we're submitting the application, we're making commitments for the bed count as well as the rent. So we cannot provide less beds or increase the rent as we're advancing after um, we hopefully luckily grant the award, um, and we turned out to be um not feasible, and we have to make the adjustment. Those are the factors that we cannot change, or there's very little room that we can adjust. Therefore, we're doing our best to do the due diligence and put the numbers uh in a conservative manner, yet grant competitive. Uh, next slide, please. In the site evaluation um process, we have considered a variety of factors. The biggest uh weight was, of course, on the grant competitiveness, but we also consider the standard uh criteria that you will consider for the long-term uh sustainable, healthy student housing that can support student success. For instance, the element of safety, how close is it to the retails? How how walkable is it? Um, how is it aligned with your long-term master plan? Uh, we have also looked into the demographics who showed interest in student housing and would also qualify for the student house, uh, for the uh, the state grant program. We examined all four colleges in a variety of different site options, and we identified the site options that would uh support the commu, would be supported by the community uh amenities for student housing. Next slide, please. These are the different options that we have examined. And uh, as I mentioned, we looked into those um, the site evaluation criteria, including the grand competitiveness, as well as the the findings from the market and analysis, which we'll share the highlights shortly. And based upon the evaluation, um, next slide, please. The district leadership has identified, and we, the consultant, also shared the recommendations that the College of Alameda Webster Street Gate site would be the most optimal for the grant application. It would position the district most competitively for the grant application. Next slide, please. This is the high-level illustration of how demand was calculated. We first identify the reasonably available market share. For instance, students who identify themselves as the homeowners wouldn't be considered reasonably available. We also use stringent filters, including the level of express or uh how uh much the students are um qualified to pay for the rents that we're testing. We also broken down the demand into different unit types as well as different cohort groups. as well as different cohort groups, including students who would move in by themselves or students, uh, who would, uh, move in with families, dependents or partners. And we also use the criteria of those who would be qualified for low-income criteria by the state grant program and those who wouldn't be qualified. And what's important in this slide is the margin of error. Uh, we tried to, uh, make the margin of error below 5% to be confident in our demand numbers. Next slide, please. A little bit less than half of the students who participated in the survey were enrolled full-time. Majority of the students would be qualified for the low-income criteria or would be considered low-income. Majority of the student also had intention to transfer to a four-year institution. And we see a high number of students in that between the 18 and 29. And from here, we can expect that there are, uh, there is a good number of students who are expecting the first, uh, second-year experience of the, uh, of a college through the student housing. Next slide, please. The locations of the students where they're taking most of their classes were well-distributed. Um, among the top zip code that students share of their current location, uh, residence locations, uh, include Alameda as the top zip code. Next slide, please. Um, about more than half of those students who participated in the survey said they are not living, uh, with a partner or dependent. Uh, and a good number of students are currently renting. And 30% of students showed clear dissatisfaction for their current living condition. Next slide, please. Most students are commuting less than 40%. Um, 39% of students are commuting less than 20 minutes. It indicates a good number of students are living close to the campuses. Um, also, the parking-related, um, data will be also used in the design phase further that how not all students, in fact, the less than, uh, 35, 35 students said they would be bringing the personal vehicle while the personal vehicle is, uh, one of the most popular, uh, mode of transportation. Next slide, please. Majority of the renters students, students who are currently renting are living in the apartment complex, which is reflecting the urbanness of the district. Uh, 29% of the students who are currently renting had to find housing to come to the district. And among those students who had to find housing, 69% of students said, uh, it was challenging to find housing within their budget. Next slide. Cost affordability is the most important factor that students are considering uh, when deciding where to live, followed by safety, security, as well as the proximity to the campus. Next slide. Students share that student housing would be important to recruit new students or retain current students. If you combine the numbers for very important and moderately important, almost, uh, 95% of students, uh, consider, uh, it will be important for retention and recruitment. Next slide. These are the direct quotes that students submitted at the end of the survey. Were able to see the excitement, uh, sense of urgency, uh, for the affordable housing, um, and the support for, uh, the opportunities to lower the cost of living. Next slide, please. About the half of the participants, uh, were, were labeled as a single student as they indicated that they would move in by themselves. And those single students, uh, combining with the assistance program question, those who will be qualified as a low-income were seeing the SB 169 rates, as well as the floor plans. And single students who identify themselves as not, uh, low-income qualified saw another non-SB 169 rate with the floor plans. And family students saw non-SB 169 rates. The reason family students only saw the non-SB 169 rates is that this grant program is essentially to support the single students, not family students. For single students, we also, uh, asked a direct question. Would you pay more to get a private bedroom? Or are you looking for the least expensive option? And, uh, 11% of students said they are looking for least expensive option, while 35% said it depends on the design. And 53% said they are looking for private bedroom. And given the grant, um, the nature of the grant program that is looking at how much we can lower the cost per bed, uh, we will get back to this discussion, but, um, the trend is the traditional residence hall double occupancy is the most efficient unit type to be considering the process. However, considering the students', um, preference or needs for the private, um, bedroom, to, to certain level, we're understanding that we need to provide a single occupancy bedroom. Next slide, please. The one before, please. Thank you. We also look at the surrounding housing market. Sadly, it's not surprising that you have very tight housing markets with very few vacancies. And, uh, the demand for housing is not met by the supply of multifamily housing development. And overcrowding, um, is a prevalent issue that we are seeing. Next slide, please. In this chart, uh, we are comparing a different rates. In the middle, the red bars are the SB 169 tested rates. And then on the left-hand side, you're seeing the market data. And the right-hand side is the self-reported data that we garnered from the survey. And to make this comparison as apple-to-apple as possible, we're inclu- including the rates and the cost estimate of the utilities and furniture, just like how student housing would be provided. And in the middle, the light blue bars are the non-SB 169, uh, rates for single students. Here, we can see that red bars are significantly lower than the market data, as well as self-reported data. So we can tell the students' rent tolerance will be strong for SB 169-funded rates. Whereas for, uh, non-SB 169, it is similar, some case higher, lower. So it is, uh, also indicating that compared to SB 169, we're, uh, expecting the students' rent tolerance will be weaker. Next slide, please. These are different, um, unit types that we tested. Single students saw largely traditional residence hall style, which is essentially the bedroom occupied by one student or two students. And they will have bathroom, um, communal kitchen, living spaces, social spaces outside of the unit. Two-bedroom semi-suite is two-bedroom right next to each other, sharing one bathroom within the unit. So you have access to more private bathroom, but other, uh, social spaces would be provided outside of the unit. An apartment, uh, two-bedroom and four-bedroom unit, uh, with the single and double occupancy. For family students, uh, we only provided apartment unit types. Given the nature of their living conditions, it's hard to imagine children sharing a bedroom with other student. Next slide, please. This is the demand breakdown for students who indicated they would move in by themselves and also, uh, potentially consider low-income. We have very strong demand for this cohort group. It's, uh, more than 1,400. And you see, there is another breakdown below the total demand for full-time students and half-time or part-time demand. The grant is requiring students to be full-time and low-income qualified to be eligible for grant-funded student housing. Those half-time or part-time student demand is reflecting those, um, who show interest and also would be qualified, um, and who also responded that they are willing to take more classes and become full-time student if student housing was provided. And you can see there's a strong preference for traditional residence hall unit type. Next slide, please. For non-SB 169 demand, um, it is lower than SB 169. However, it is almost 500 beds, which is considered to be strong, uh, with, uh, also, uh, great preference for traditional residence hall unit type. For family, uh, students, uh, the demand, uh, was identified as a 142 units with the, uh, strong, uh, preference for two-bedroom apartment, followed by studio apartment. Next slide, please. So based on the findings, um, of the site analysis as the market and demand analysis, the direction that we are taking forward for the grant application, again, which is due July 3rd, and we are, uh, planning to show you the application draft for approval in June board meeting. So essentially, we have April and May to complete the application draft. Um, for this application, we're moving forward, uh, with the College of, uh, of Alameda site with a scale of 200 to 300 beds, will, which will be refined further as we are, uh, continuing our study. And for the unit type, we are testing traditional residence hall style with double occupancy 80% and single occupancy 20%. Uh, in the month of April, we are working on focus groups for College of Alameda. Uh, we are working on developing the concepts and preceding the test fits uh, of this program, uh, in the identified site, and that will also inform the cost estimate. We're also going to, uh, start the discussion of total cost of ownership, which means that we're going to look at the performer of the standalone student housing, but also examining the potential physical impacts on the campus by having student housing. And this is your first time student housing. So we want to make sure that we're starting the conversation uh, so that the community can be better prepared for this potential transformation to a 20, 24/7 campus. And we'll be back in the May board meeting to share you more updates, refined, uh, updates. And as I mentioned, in June, uh, we'll have a draft of applications seeking for your approval. Uh, Bobby on the line, uh, would you like to add more, um, information regarding the grant?
Yeah, sure. So, uh, thank you AJ. Um, just, just like to add that we are attempting to make our proposal as competitive as, as possible. As, um, AJ alluded to, uh, these will all be scored, um, with the state chancellor's office. Um, not only by every, uh, community college district that, um, submits an application in this round, but also those colleges within the Bay Area region. And so we're, um, we're tasked with the goal to, to make our application as competitive, as competitive as possible, um, within our Bay Area region, as well as overall. And so, um, for those factors of scoring that we can influence, um, we will try our best to get the highest score possible in those areas, um, so that, so that we have a competitive of shot of getting, um, some of the remaining funds left in SB 169.
Um, that, that, that's all. Thank you.
Questions, comments, colleagues? Esti, Gonzales Brito?
Thank you. Um, thanks for that presentation. Really exciting. I just, I mean, maybe this is just my confusion. So I saw there was like, so it sounded like some of the criteria for being competitive is about cost of beds and number of beds, right? But when I looked at the survey reports, um, there seemed to be a really, uh, skewed towards private bedrooms and, um, and sing- or singles, um, or, you know, so I'm wondering, um, and it looks like the proposal is 80% double occupancy. So are we going to have enough demand for a double occupancy, given the, the, that students really want singles?
That's right. Yeah, so that's a great point. Uh, we're trying to find that fine balance between what is grant competitive, which is the cost per bed, and also the student demand. And we do have, uh, while we have stronger demand for, uh, single occupancy traditional residence hall, even looking at the double occupancy, we have a sufficient amount of demand. Because you have extraordinary demand for affordable student housing. It is almost 1,500 beds. And, uh, if I can share one more example, um, Santa Rosa Junior College is planning to open a student housing this fall. And for them, they are currently pre-leasing their beds, and double occupancy is already almost sold out. And it's more a single occupancy that they're waiting to lease out.
Thank you.
Thank you. PP Quinlan?
Yes. So I, I don't know if this is a question for you or for the chancellor or just to ponder, but, um, we cannot afford to, um, I hate the term, but lose money on this venture. Uh, our, our situation already with, uh, students that are not paying their fees is creating a, a drag for the district. And I'm just wondering if there's any discussion how rent is going to be paid. Um, I know during my student days, I was not the most responsible, uh, person around paying the rent. It was pretty low on my priorities. And I'm just wondering, uh, how, how we're going to do that.
Thanks for the question. Um, our next step is now we have the direction on the program, um, scale and the unit type. Our next step this, uh, month is working on the operational analysis. And we'll show you more details next time we're back. But in our projection, um, of the performer, we're going to consider the bed that exactly the situation that you mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, couple of things that I think should be emphasized. Um, one is this is an experiment. We've not done this before. And if we're successful in kind of working this out, maybe this leads to something bigger. That clearly, the demand in our district for affordable housing is much bigger than the number of beds we're contemplating here. I think it is, uh, and we haven't really talked about this that much, but I think that it is the intention to not simply house College Valameda students, but to citate at College Valameda and make housing available across the district. So I, I, I think if we just make that clear, the whole district will relax a little bit. Um, so that's my assumption. I've not heard anybody else make any other kind of assumptions. I frankly prefer the Laney site. Um, but, you know, this is a down payment. We'll see where we go. As we look at this particular thing, I'm gathering we're also simultaneously looking at who's going to manage it, because I don't imagine that we are going to add this to our student services portfolio, uh, in any way at all. So we're looking for that, and I think if people understand that, they'll also begin to relax a little bit. Like, oh my God, we can't do this. Why are we taking on this? So, uh, I think that's a worth noting. Quick question. As you look at pricing this out, if it's built on our land with state grant money, then what we have is maintenance costs and operations. And so the cost of the housing is going to be particularly low, like way, way below market. And I think if you look around the state, most of the housing that's been built, like at Santa Rosa, it's been public-private partnerships where they've been dependent on making profit. We're not talking about that. We're not talking about making a profit at all. We're talking about using our land with grant money and then pricing it to pay for the maintenance and the operations, which will mean a really low cost. As you cost this out, what's the range per bed that, that your study is now indicating?
For operational, uh, cost per bed?
When you think about how much we're going to have to charge a student to live there, uh, if we build it on our land with grant money and what we have to do is pay for maintenance and operations in perpetuity, what is the rent cost per bed that we imagine for a single and a double occupancy?
Um, so trustee UN, that is. So trustee UN, that is exactly the question that we're going to have further discussion to get you more updated numbers and closer to, as close as possible at the moment. But right now, I can tell you that the cap, there is a cap for the rent by the grant program. And for your county is $12.49. And if we can lower 10% from that cap, we get the maximum point. So in terms of the grant competitiveness in the grant application, our strategy is put that, we're hoping to be able to put that max number, the highest number that still garner the high maximum points from the evaluated scoring rubric. But back to your question of how much it's going to actually cost per bed, that will require a further discussion because it will be not only the standalone student housing operations that we're going to consider, but also we're going to consider the physical impacts. For instance, you may need extra hours of the financial aid person. Ken was right here, and he may need to work with the student housing to figure out how it's going to work together. So that's the additional conversation that we're going to have with the district and college to find out, identify in a conservative way what we can expect.
Okay, so we'll get that number closer to next month?
As we get closer to submitting the grant, one of the things that Volts is going to be doing is developing a total cost of ownership. And that total cost of ownership will include maintenance, it will include security, it will include additional services that we may have to provide. And if we are going to either do it in-house or outsource it to a company that's going to manage it, what will that cost be? Will we get something off of that? We're also looking at public-private partnerships to enhance it because this is the money the state is giving us. But maybe we can work with some of our community partners and our private enterprises that want to also bring in services that are offered to our students at a cost that would help to offset the rental costs that we have for our students. So that still is to be determined in the next couple of months. And then we'll be back to give you another update, which will include all of that information because then we have to go out and actually put it all together, submit it, get the board to approve it, and then get it up to the state by the 3rd of July. So all of that is yet to be completed. But the first thing was to determine which site we were going to do. So we're trying to do it sequentially and keep you up to date as we go along, rather than waiting at the very end to say, okay, we did all of this work.
Right.
You know, that's one of the things that I said I would do with the board is to keep you updated as we go. So this is the first, we had one enclosed session just to give you an update of where we were and guidance on which direction. And then we've had this one, and then we plan on having another one with the executive body. The expanded cabinet is coming up. We'll give an update to them. We'll get input from them. Volts goes away, does its numbers calculations, comes back, and then they'll give another update to the board. And then we'll be ready to go, and all of those things will be identified by that time. And then if we get the funds, then we determine how do we want to manage it? Do we want to put in RFP for somebody to come out and do it? But by the time we get the money, we actually build the building, we'll have plenty of time to make those decisions. But those are options that have already been brought up, and I think they're going to give us some pros and cons of moving forward on making those decisions. They've been a very good partner so far. Thank you, AJ.
I think for me, the most exciting part of this is kind of the transformative nature of what we can do if we put this in an equity frame. And then we think about our student athletes who are traveling from all over the place. We think about people who are homeless. We think about just giving people a desk to study.
Yeah.
You know, a quiet place to study. Not that a dorm is necessarily the most quiet place to study, but I think this really can be transformative. So I'm excited about where we're going. I hope that as soon as possible, we begin to engage the faculty and the staff, particularly in the student services side, like financial aid, like counseling, and so forth, because we're going to have a 24/7 operation then, and it will really change what's happening in College Valameda as well as Laney, which is in close proximity. So thank you. Congratulations on getting us this far. Cross fingers. We'll see whether Gavin follows through with some money.
Yeah, thank you very much. I also want to echo how excited I am about this project. I'm incredibly supportive of this, and I'm really looking forward to your next presentation.
Thank you, AJ. Thank you, IBC Snap.
Okay. Go ahead, Chancellor.
President, I was wondering, we do have an individual, Dr. Helen Benjamin, who is out of state and is two hours ahead of us. And I would ask for executive privilege if, before we go into discussion of the consent items, if we could move that one, there is only one action item, and so that she can provide some backdrop, and if she's on the line, I'm not.
She's on.
Okay, if the board would indulge me in this request simply because she is out of state?
Yes, so we're going to be moving to 9.1 under action items.
Thank you so much.
All of this item?
Okay, local discussion?
Do we need to have a local vote on the motion to move it?
No.
Okay. Okay.
What was your, could you clarify your motion?
My motion is to move approval of item 9.1. So this is the revision of the board policy on chancellor hiring. I think it's a motion made, motion's made and seconded.
So this is the time for the discussion?
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. I thought it was to, you are moving, motion to move it. My.
No, no, no. I moved approval.
Yes, you're moving fast on me here.
We already have this discussion. We're just doing this again.
So as the agenda indicates, the board voted on this at their last meeting, and Dr. Benjamin was not available. There were some questions. I tried to answer those questions. And so we passed the changes. Unfortunately, human error, we posted the wrong version on the webpage. And so we're bringing it back for transparency so that we don't just slip in the corrected version because this is so important. I wanted to make sure that there was no question about what was actually approved by the board. And so, Dr. Benjamin, if you're there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and this, I'll let you kind of give us a little history about it and where we are and the reasons why the recommendation went forward, just to put it into context.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. And I haven't met the new trustee. Welcome to you and congratulations on being selected. This policy 2431, we, when I say we, I mean Cindy, Dr. Cindy Miles and I brought it forward because it, in the state it was before the changes were made, it did not reflect current practice. There were several places in the policy that didn't reflect current practice. And so we asked the board if we could make changes in it so that we would be following a policy and conducting a search that was current. And so the changes were made, and of course, it had to go through the governor's process, and it went through and came back to the board for approval. And there were, there was some updating to it in terms of what actually happened the time before last around the position profile. Position profile was used with priorities in that first paragraph that was not correct. And so it now reflects that, and B remains the same. C, we added, the board trustees have participated in the process for the last couple of times on an interim hire and also in another process, a permanent hire that failed, the search failed anyway. And so that needed to be reflected in the process as well. And then we added in D, the role of the consultants that was missing from the previous one because the district does use a consulting firm typically in these processes. And then there was a lot of discussion with the board around site visits and whether those should be done. I think it was all very, from my point of view, a very healthy discussion in updating the process or the policy, which is a combination here, policy and process, I think. But those were the main changes in it. And as it turns out, this is what you have before you. Board policy 2431 is the updated version, what was added to the agenda.
Go ahead, trustee Reese.
Hi, Dr. Benjamin. So what is added, what is attached to this agenda is the for C, three trustees who shall have an advisory vote, and F may authorize, site visit may authorize, and site visit may be conducted. So this is slightly different than the the board policy that you and Dr. Cindy Miles had changed and had dialogued with the board about. So I just want to make sure that.
Yes, that's the result, and I missed the meeting where you had the discussion. But that's, those changes are the result of the going through the governor's process and what came back through your shared governor's process. And when you voted, I think they made other recommendations as well, but the ones you accepted were the ones for the three trustees, which was there. And the original recommendation, that was for the three trustees would have a vote, and the governors, through the governance process, it was recommended that they have an advisory vote. And you accepted, the board accepted that change. And then the board in F had may authorize, and the constituency groups had shell, which would require a site visit. But the board wanted to have an option there of making a decision at the point at which they got to this part of the policy of determining whether they would have a site visit or not. And so that may remained, and I think it went out as a may. And you didn't accept that change from the committee, the shared governance group, the PCP.
If I could just provide a little bit more clarity, there were three areas that were, the board accepted all of the recommendations except for three. One of them, and I would say two and a half maybe, because one, they accepted part of the recommendation, but they changed the number. The first one was where they said at, whenever possible, that we would have onsite or face-to-face. That was in the first paragraph. The second, and the board accepted that. The second item that was there was on the composition of the committee itself. The original request from Dr. Benjamin was that it would be three board members. The change that came from PGC was that there would be one board member, and that that one board member would be an advisory vote. There was discussion here that you wanted the board, sitting board right now, wanted that to be three members, but they would go with the advisory vote. That's that other half. And then the third one, as you indicated, Dr. Benjamin, was that instead of saying that it shall be a site visit, the board changed that. That was the recommendation that came from PGC to go back to what it originally was, which that it may. So those are the really, the major changes from the original one, which you have in your packet, to the one that the board approved on the 13th, I think. I'm not sure of the date, but it was the one that the board approved at his last agenda.
March 14th, I think.
Oh, 14th. Thank you.
trustee Wethrow?
I think this is within the context of a development of a policy, since it's an action item. I'd like to move that the criteria for the three board members on the selection committee, that their votes be counted and not advisory.
Natasha, can you? Okay, it needs a second then.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Yeah, the. Natasha, can you advise?
Surely, you'd have to either seek an amendment to the original motion or after. Because you made the original motion, so you'd be amending your own motion, and then you'd have to ask for the same second again, for another second. Oh, sorry. Thank you. So you could make, seek an amendment to the motion.
We have a proposed amended motion. Go ahead, trustee UN.
I don't accept this as an amendment. I think we had this discussion. I'm not interested in revisiting the discussion. If the, if the body wants this, somebody can second it, and then they can vote on the amendment to the main motion. And then we'll vote on the main motion, but I'm not interested in revisiting this conversation at this point. That's just me.
Go ahead, trustee Reese.
I'm interested in revisiting this motion. I'm interested in revisiting this motion.
Sorry, what you would do is second his motion to amend.
Second his motion.
Okay, and now we have.
You know, amended motion.
The amendment.
Please just. Yes.
Just, I just want to be clear. So this language that we have in front of us is what we agreed to before, and we voted to approve, right? This is just, this is it in writing with all the changes.
That's right.
So I, yeah, I think we should just move forward with what we've already agreed to.
Go ahead, VP Quinlan.
Yes, I mean, when we got the PGC motion, we compromised on it, but their motion was pretty much 100% recommendation out of administration, faculty, classified, everybody that's going to have to live with this decision for the next 10 or 15 years, hopefully. And I think we should really take that into consideration that there was such, across the board, the kind of decisions that we don't often see, pretty unanimous agreement on this. And I think we should just move forward with the recommendation we have, and I would really oppose any change in that.
Just Johannes? While I would prefer to have two trustees on the board, on the committee with a vote, and I believe a couple of other trustees would prefer three with a vote. As the other trustees have mentioned, we did have this conversation. It was four to three. I'll take it. As is. I think we're only discussing this again because it was improperly put online. So really, we wouldn't even have this conversation.
Okay, anybody else?
Call the question.
We do have a request from a trustee who wanted to revisit this. So what would be the procedure moving forward? We can do, we can call for a vote.
You can call the question if there's no other discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
In the, and again, Dr. Benjamin had gone through all of this with us in terms of the discussion. Quite a lot back, and I was trying to reiterate those same perceptions and viewpoints and dialogue when we were together the last time voting on this. And one of the things that we have to remember is that this is the one, one chancellor, this is the one employee of the board. And, and there's two parts to that. One is that the recommendations that Louis was talking about, the recommendations from the different constituent bodies. There are also recommendations. And those recommendations are absolutely important, absolutely, but they're also recommendations. This is the one candidate, the one employee, the one, the one only employee that we have. And so being in those particular meetings and having a vote for our only employee is so incredibly critical. And I just want to put forth a distinction that I already had said earlier on, but when we looked at the old board policy that Dr. Miles and Dr. Benjamin had changed, the board members prior to, whenever it was created in two thousand twelve, had actually had no members on there. But the clause at the end of that particular policy was that the board can pull from the pool if they don't like the recommendation. When Dr. Benjamin and Dr. Miles had brought this to us, it was in an effort to be collaborative, transparent, and really kind of go through the process, but also the point was the same with that old policy as with Dr. Benjamin and, and Dr. Miles's revised version, which is this is the board's one employee. This is our search. This is our employee. And I think we want the best for this district. I think that's the part that I'm actually not getting. We're, we want the best for this district. It's not like the board would do something that would be for the malintent or the consequence or the malconsequence of the district. And so, but this is the one employee that we have. And I just, I don't know if, if Dr. Benjamin can speak during discussion or not, but I think it might be good.
Do we have Dr. Benjamin speak to that?
Yes, I was.
Natasha, can you advise? Mike.
Yeah, the president seeks to, if the, the, the call to question would be if you've gone through some extensive timeline. But if the president seeks to continue the dialogue, then the calling of the question wouldn't unilaterally cease the discussion unless there had been some extreme circumstance where you would have a disruption or you need to have a call of a question for a timeline or some impact. In addition, to be noted is that you actually have not formally adopted Robert's rules of order for this board. So the discretion would always fall to the president.
Let's go ahead and hear from Dr. Benjamin very quickly and then we'll move forward.
Well, our recommendation at the, when we first looked at the policy was what trustee Cindy, I can't figure her last name, Reese, is, is saying that the, you had a kind of compromise in there before. And now you've removed that compromise because you lose all authority. You don't have a vote in the committee. The other thing I did, because I'm working on another search, was to do, there are a lot of hires right now in the state, as you well know, for chancellors and superintendent presidents that report to a board. And I just canvassed about six of those from the last year and those that have happened this year. And all of those that I canvassed had trustees on them. There's a move to that now, and I'm glad we did it here a while ago. And you did have a vote on that. And those trustees did have a vote in your last process. And the, the six survey, just through phone calls and texting, they all had trustees. If it was a five-member board, most of them had two. If it was a seven, they had three. And all of them had a vote at the, at the first level of interview, which kind of supported, which supported what we were recommending to you. Of course, the choice is yours, but you, and what I found, because I've done a couple where we've had this happen, and interestingly, the it's a really good way to build trust within the committee, I think, to have the board members there, have these good discussions, to have a vote. And, and it's, but if you haven't done it, then you don't quite know how it works, but it, it really does work, work well. So that was why we recommended it, and we thought that it would be a good idea for you to have that in your policy, that the board would be part of that first level committee, would have a vote because you're you're there as a quote unquote witness to what happens. You get to participate, but not in an overbearing way. It's typically where all the members are equal. And as Cindy pointed out a couple of times in her statement, the end product here is a person who reports to you and is the only person who reports to you. And that, that was, that's why we recommended that. Because you don't, you don't hire anybody else in the whole district. And seems you're giving something up to me when you, when you don't have a vote on that at that first level.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin. Let's go ahead, call the question.
Sasha, could you do the roll call?
Yes, and can I confirm, I'm changing it to approve with amendment to change advisory to with a vote? What is the official?
Can you repeat it, Natasha?
I believe the, the vote is on the amended motion.
Yeah, we need some language to so we're clear.
The amended motion was from trustee Withrow, though, to change it from advisory.
Correct. And I believe we had a second from trustee Reese.
Yes, so change from advisory to a vote.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I got the verbiage correct. Okay, student trustee Hogan.
Right, yeah.
So may I clarify? To simply strike the the, the amendment the trustee Withrow has put in forward is simply to strike who shall have an advisory vote. So from parenthesis to parenthesis, strike that language and the rest of the thing stands, and that is what we're voting on to amend that language.
Yes.
If there's a majority of this board who says yes, then we'll proceed to the main motion, which is to vote on the entire package. So this is a, a vote on amendment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
No.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, let's proceed to the main motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you, second.
There's already a motion.
Okay, so we're good.
My motion, Withrow seconded.
Yes.
We've amended that motion, and now we're voting on that motion, which is to vote on the amended.
We are now voting on the amended policy.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call, please.
I did not get a second. I apologize. At least I didn't hear a second.
That the original motion I made, trustee Withrow seconded, that is now the motion, the motion that we're voting on.
Correct.
So what we just voted on was an amendment to the motion that I originally made that Bill seconded.
That's what we're going through now.
Yes, we just need a roll call on that main motion.
To adopt this policy.
Yes.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Latino.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Johannes.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito.
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan.
No.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move back to the consent item. I believe we pulled seven point one, correct, trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Is table this item to our next agenda, our next meeting on twenty eighth of April? The motion table.
So if there's an, if, if the rest of the trustees have an interest in tabling the item, because it's, it's not coming as a recommendation from the chancellor to table. So you would need a second on that motion.
And a motion to table is not debatable.
No, right, no, we don't table, we don't debate the motion itself. You just.
So if we, if we take a second, we vote, there's no discussion.
Correct.
Right.
So, so you don't get to ask the why.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, and so everybody's clear, maybe it's just me. If we, if somebody seconded this, we don't actually have any discussion at all.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve. If it gets a second, then we could discuss it, and then there could be a substitute motion to table, but then we at least get to hear from trustee Quinlan about why he wants to table it. So I'm going to move to approve.
Okay. There, well, there's no second to that motion.
Oh.
Sure.
So I made a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve seven point one. We got a second?
Okay.
Okay, second by trustee Reese, discussion. BP Quinlan.
Yes, so I find this proposal to be kind of a mess. First of all, both companies that qualified for as small local business enterprises do not meet our qualifications for small local enterprise. They're both outside of, and the language is a small local business enterprise is a business that has not exceeded gross annual revenue. It, it talks about how much money. And for the past three years and meets below geographic requirements, and the same thing for the SELB, except different amounts. And it says that business must be located at a fixed established commercial address located in the district's market area of Albany, Alameda, Berkeley, Emeryville, Oakland, or Piedmont, and not a temporary or movable office, a post office box, or a telephone answering service. So neither one of our vendors, even though they all both checked the SLB box, meet that qualifications. So that's the first, first issue I have, first issue I have problems with. The other thing that I have problems with in our language on, let's see, this is not a ICC, it's ICA, and both ICCs and ICAs say they cannot, we cannot do an ICC or an ICA to replace employees or the work of a bargaining unit. And this clearly does that. And I don't know if we've had any kind of discussion with the bargaining unit around this work or their objections to it, or their agreement with it, whether this can work be done. Now, the, the thing is, once these things, issues are ironed out, I may support this because I think the work has to be done. But I hate to see us not following our own processes and trying to move stuff through that, that kind of puts the integrity of our process at, at risk when we're not following our own processes and our rules.
So let me speak to the first one, which was that we're not following our own policies. We had discussion regarding this in December of two thousand twenty two. We had vendors that came to the district at the board meeting advocating for moving forward with resources and funds. When we went out with a RFP process, at that time, I reviewed our process and our process is an aspirational goal. There is not a board policy. It's a procedure. And if we have no one within the region, as we have had in the past, and the region being the areas that are identified as our board boundaries that apply for it, we have gone outside of those of boundaries and we have awarded in the past. So that's the first thing. So none of the two who applied were within the region. So we looked at both of those because they were the only two bids. There was no one in the region. The, the vendor that we provided the recommendation to move forward and submitted to the board was in Antioch. We then went and looked at all of the proper paperwork and the RFP. And the vendor that we recommended was the only one that met that criteria. The other vendor did not have insurance indemnifying the district, did not submit other pieces of paperwork identified in the RFP. Then we looked at the history of the vendors and we did our research. The vendor that we recommended has been working with the district since two thousand and seven. So we felt that there was sufficient cause for us to move forward with this because we have to get this done and we only have a limited time to do it. And even putting it off for a couple of weeks, still kind of, nobody is going to go forward until they know they've gotten the green light to move forward with this kind of a project. We identified the scope of the project. If you look at the square footage divided into the amount of time and the labor and the efforts, I think it's reasonable to move forward with that. We're talking about the entire district, all five sites, not just the colleges, but also the district too. On the item of not following bargaining units, we initially started out in an effort to expedite the cleaning process, having our own employees do the work. We were told that you cannot do that by the union, that we were putting people in a position of working out a classification, asking them to do it. Even though that some of the employees wanted to do it, and we did do that, we were told can't do that by Local Thirty Nine. So then we went out for an RFP, because if we can't get our employees to do it, we have to get someone else to do it. So we went out with the RFP. I've already explained to you what the RFP did, clearly outlined it. The vendor was within compliance of the RFP, and that was why we were recommending it. The individual is a small local business. And we are working right now, because we had this discussion in December of two thousand twenty two. Trustee Ewing said, you're right, chancellor. It's aspirational. You guys go back and bring us a policy and an AP. We have been working on that since December. We have a team of individuals that are working on it. It's being run by S three sixty. Shandra Scott has been leading that. Julian Gross, our attorney, has been working with us on that. IVC Smith, they gave me an update this last week of where we are. We're close to being finished, to bringing that back to the board to approve. They have been working with the small local business community that has an advisory group. They are recommending that we establish an advisory group so that we comply with all of that. So we are doing all of that, which the board asked us to do. You'll probably see it in the next thirty days. Because it's that close to being finished. And with the current policy that we have, you're right, neither one of them fall within that parameter. Both of them are outside. Both of them are outside, but the ones that are outside, one finished the RFP and completed everything satisfactory, according to what our legal team recommend. So we are still recommending approval.
Are there any other questions or discussions on this item?
Uh, trustee Quinlan, you brought up the small local business. That's something that we're working on, and as Chancellor Jackson said, we'll be coming back to the board to give you the business plan, the things that we want to move forward with. In all of our RFQs, RFPs, over the years, we've been challenged with small businesses that are outside the six service areas. They say to us, but wait, we are Alameda County first, and we've voted for your bond. So we're trying to address that in our small local business program. So although these are small local businesses outside our area, they're still within Alameda County. So when we come back, we are going to address that issue. So I, I understand your question.
I I'm not sure that people outside of our district are voting on the bond.
Alameda County.
No, it's just our district.
Excuse me.
Any other discussion, colleagues? Trustee Reese?
I, I would just I would just say that actually, the, the procurement history, as it's written here, is, having looked through many of these, actually, this one's pretty well substantiated. And it sounds like, it wasn't just, obviously, UA Mobile Wash and Rain Associates, but the bid was given to ABM first. And, and it was, and after something happened with ABM, um, our legal counsel, DGS, consulted with legal counsel, and they said to move forward. And so this was very substantiated, and it went through two rounds of invitations for bid. So I feel like it really went through a due, due process in a way that that, that, that is satisfactory, to say.
Trustee Gonzalez, one?
I think trustee Quinlan has raised important issues for discussion, but they're long-term discussion issues. Our campuses are a mess. And our custodial crew doesn't have the capacity to do above and beyond. So we can have it one way, but we can't have it both ways. We can't say, oh, these poor custodians, they, you know, they're overworked, and then not give them relief. We can't say we want good campuses that are clean, and then not get it done. So we've asked our staff to come forward with a plan to make things work. They brought us something that's not perfect, all right, nothing's perfect, but they've done their due diligence here. Let's clean up the campuses. You know, and then we can address the long-term staffing questions as we can. I don't, you know, if we're gonna bring on custodial staff to do this, that's a long-term process, and it's a long-term commitment, and this is HIF money. This isn't ongoing money, so we're gonna get a one-time clean here, let's take the win. That's my sense of it. With all due respect, and I, and I really profoundly mean that, I, I appreciate the questions that are being raised here.
Anyone else? Okay, let's move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'm entertaining a motion for our, the rest of our consent calendar.
Move approval.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Second by BP Quinlan, discussion. Let's move to roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Latino?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Let's move to Board of Trustees reports. I'll start to my left, uh, trustee Gonzalez Brito, you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Johannes?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, BP Quinlan?
Yes, um, Laney College will be hosting their annual, I think it's about our seventh or eighth or ninth annual CTE open house on April twenty-ninth, so put it on your calendar now. Think it'll be from nine to one, Rudy, is that? Something like that, nine to one, I'll get the specific hours, but it is the morning of April twenty-ninth. Uh, you'll be able to tour all the CTE departments at Laney College, and, you know, you, you learn a lot.
I've attended that before, it's, it's really informational. Trustee Gonzalez, one, any report?
Thank you, I've been out of town for a couple meetings, and it's, it's good to be back here with colleagues. In March, March nineteenth, I was at the Faculty Association Conference, the Faculty Association of the California Community Colleges Conference, and I moderated a panel with trustees at this conference, and these were, it was a panel specifically with faculty trustees and former student trustees. It featured President Board of the Foothill, the Anson Community College District, Patrick Aaron's, two trustees over at CCSF, who were part of a clean sweep of displacing incumbents and, and running an insurgent slate, and they've kind of taken over that board in a really interesting way. Uh, we had Nita Martinez and Vic Chung, who were just really so really qualified. And the other panelist was our very own Louis Quinlan. It was really a special panel. The brilliance of the panelists, the, the conversation was rich, it was complex. And what I think it did was, with this largely faculty audience, but also with a good number of students, is it demonstrated, one, the power of faculty and student voices on boards, the value that, that we bring to that endeavor. But it also was really rich, because it explained that even when you get elected, it's not like you snap your fingers and everything you ever wanted happens. It, it was a way more nuanced discussion, where you could talk about the challenges of coming out of a constituent group, but then having a different perspective and serving in a different role, and needing to make compromises, but also the value of and the importance of staying connected to a base within your community that elected you. I think it was one of the, the most brilliant things that I've, I've seen, and I, in particular, really appreciated the perspective that the colleague to my left brought. Uh, I think the entire room fell in love with Louis in particular, but also with the entire panel. So I want to thank my colleague for his participation, and I look forward to more of that, thank you.
Trustee Reese?
Just really quickly, I attended a meeting actually today with the Alameda County Youth Advisory Board, Youth Advisory Board, and they have a coordinated action plan targeting youth that are homeless. And so actually, what you were talking about, Dr. Jones, was exactly what I was thinking about as it relates to what they were putting on their action plan today. There's something going on this side, so I'm a little distracted here as to what that conversation is. Anyhow, there were a couple of things that I pulled away from that. They were movers and shakers, they were very passionate, they were very organized, which I absolutely loved. And they shared some data, the data that in two thousand and seventeen, there were fifty-six hundred homeless people in Alameda County, in two thousand and twenty-two, were at nine thousand seven hundred and forty-seven. It'd be interesting to find out what happens at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, because I'm sure that's gonna increase quite a bit. And in two thousand and twenty-two, with ten thousand homeless people, the number of youth between the ages of twelve and seventeen that are not associated with a family, twenty-five hundred. So twenty-five percent of the homeless people in Alameda County are youth that are not part of a family. And so with these kids, and I say kids, because they're just amazing, and they have this incredible energy, and they're just so much younger than I am. They were so, so motivated. And if anybody's gonna change the world, it's gonna be people like them, so I'm very excited. And OUSD is one of their partners, Alameda County Supervisors, uh, the mayor's office, and they really want the Peralta District to be one of their partners too as well. Would love to talk to you all a little bit more as to, do we have any students that might want to be or participate on that particular board? And/or what can we do as their partner to help kind of support and be a resource for this group and their action plan?
Thank you. Trustee Whitrow, you have any report? Okay. Um, one thing I wanted to kind of give an announcement about, so tomorrow evening, actually, at Berkeley City College, we're gonna have our Cesar Chavez, a lotus warta, and other celebration of farm workers, I'm sure you're nodding your head. Um, so I'm gonna be there, I'm really excited, we're gonna have a teach-in starting at four thirty. And then the program, the formal program will start at six, so I would love to see everybody there, it's gonna be a really great event. Berkeley City College and the auditorium.
President Delphine Polk, could I make an announcement?
Of course.
Um, I just wanted to let the, the board know and the community know that our own president at Berkeley City College, the Board of Trustees for the Santa Rosa JC approved her appointment as the chan, as the chancellor, as the president superintendent, so congratulations, even though she was sick and couldn't make it. Congratulations, their gain, our loss. That's true, Frank Chung and
That district's only had six presidents.
Yeah.
Talk about longevity.
Well, she will be speaking tomorrow, hopefully, and she'll be feeling better, so she's on the program. And so please feel free to join us, it'll be a great event. BP Quinlan, do we have any announcements?
Yes, we do. Uh, our announcements for April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. This week is the priority enrollment period for summer and fall two thousand and twenty-three semesters, with open enrollment beginning on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Visit www.peralta.edu and click Do More to start the enrollment process. Number two, College of Alameda is hosting Tasty Tuesdays with free, free food for students every Tuesday at eleven-thirty AM at the Student Lounge. Three, the Bond Measures Oversight Committee will meet here in the District Boardroom tomorrow at five-thirty PM on Wednesday, April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Four, COA Acting President, Dr. Diana Barzami uh, is a featured guest in the Lunch and Learn on April, Thursday, April thirteenth, sponsored by Alameda Chamber and Economic Alliance. BCC is hosting Give a Dream Make a Reality Panel on Thursday, April thirteenth, at six PM. The panel discusses the mission, vision, and values of the Berkeley City College and Documented Community Resource Center. Visit the Peralta website, events across the district, for more information on these and other events. Five, the Board of Trustees will hold a special meeting enrollment academy next week on Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's it.
Okay. And Dr. Bestakoff?
If I may clarify trustee Quinlan's report, on his report, and I had to delay a second, because during my time as Vice President of Instruction, trustee Quinlan typically knew more about Laney than I did, but I, I did seek some clarification, the CTE open house is actually from ten to two o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Thank you for that. And I believe with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.